Councilmember Davis?
Here.
Councilmember Rogers?
Here.
Councilmember Harakaris?
Here.
Councilmember Kelly?
Here.
Councilmember Harris?
Present.
Councilmember Isles?
Here.
Councilmember Nusma?
He'll be here right away.
He's not here today, not here yet. Councilmember Burns is not here. Councilmember Sufferton?
Here.
Mayor Abyss?
Here. We have a quorum present and are prepared to do the people's work for the evening. It is my understanding, Luke, that no member is seeking virtual participation this evening. Is that correct? Okay. In that case, the next item on my agenda is mayor's public announcements and proclamations, of which there is one: Happy Holidays. The next item on the agenda is the city manager's... Was that insufficiently? Did I put my part in that?
I expected at least one whereas. Whereas the holidays are approaching us, therefore let it be known: Happy Holidays.
I stand corrected. Whereas it is December, therefore Happy Holidays. The next item on the agenda is the city manager's public announcements.
Thank you, Mayor. Happy Holidays, Happy New Year.
The next item on the agenda is communications from the city clerk.
Just wishing everyone Happy Holidays and Happy New Year.
The next item on the agenda is public comment. In keeping with the way things have gone so far, there are under 15 people seeking to give public comment this evening, so everyone will be given three minutes. We begin, as always, with those who signed up in person to speak in person, beginning with David Sutherland, who will be followed by William Carter, and then Tina Payden.
What's up, y'all? Okay, A-22 on the agenda? Come on. Come on, really? What are we doing here? God. What's it called? A-22? Approval of, uh... The Contract with Axon Enterprise, Inc. for the Evanston Police Body-Worn Camera Program. Oh, body-worn cameras, right? Body-worn cameras? That's what we're... That's what the agenda item is, right? Body-worn cameras. You need those, right? Six million dollars for body-worn cameras? Seven years, six million dollars. Really? Body-worn cameras? That's how much it costs? No, it's not. You all know that. Come on, we all know that. That's a lot of money, you know? Like, we... That's a fraction of that money could have gone to Wesley Building to save those buildings. It could go to a lot of things that this community needs. All this money going to the cops? For a lot of things other than body-worn cameras, right? But what else is there? What's in that contract? We're not sure, right? Because the agenda item is redacted. What's going on here? What's this? I mean, I tried to read it, just not... Just like, white it out. Like, is this an OMA violation or what? I don't know what's going on in here. I'm sorry I'm boring you, Nusma. Because I know you were researching it all day, but... You remember this? Flock Safety? Remember this debacle that we went through? We all went through? Are we still paying for that contract? You know? This Axon contract makes Flock Safety look like peanuts. It's nothing. Fusis, the Real-Time Crime Center? Do you guys know what that is? What they're adding in there? Electroshock weapons? Drones? They're taking... They snuck in the Flock contract. They didn't even tell you guys. They like... They snuck in those cameras, and then... And then what I told you would happen, happened? Even though they said over and over it didn't happen, right? So can we believe those cops anymore? Anyway, regardless, we gotta slow down on this. They're trying to rush this contract through, okay? Slow down on this contract, and let's talk about it, and look at the evidence, and look at the facts about what is actually... We're buying here for six million dollars for seven years. This is a big deal. Please, take it off the consent agenda. Hold it. Do whatever you need to do, but this is ridiculous. We gotta stop. We should have learned a lesson with Flock Safety. We spent all fall fighting the feds in the streets, okay? Were you guys there? I know Abyss was there a little bit, but that was ridiculous. And you know what? They're coming back here, okay? So they're coming back, and they're gonna be using the data from Axon and whoever... Whatever technology you guys are putting out there to find us and hunt us down again. So please, slow the fuck down on this, okay? Thanks.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is William Carter, who will be followed by Tina Payden, and then Sarah Rathbun.
Good evening, folks. I'm gonna try to be as brief as possible. I'd like to talk a little bit about etiquette. I was at one of your council meetings. Bobby Burns was the chair. I made some comments, and he felt that he had the right to rebut. I'm told that's an abuse of authority, because when he says something, we're not allowed to respond to what he says. That's a form of bullying. That's an abuse of authority. Am I wrong? Just nod or shake your head. Some kind of response. If I say something in public comment, and you're not supposed to say anything back to me, if you rebut what I say, you make a comment, and I can't say anything back to you, who's abusing their authority? That's part one. Part two: I will reiterate the Wesley tenants were screwed. We lost property. We lost our homes. We lost our community, and no dollar amount's gonna put that back for us. You can't take a dollar from us and give us a nickel, pat us on the head, and tell us to run about our business. I will say this over and over and over and over again until the entire city of Evanston understands what you people did is just like Seneca in New York. You want the property, you run the people over, you run them out, you build what you want. Look up Seneca, Central Park, Manhattan, New York. Wesley is just a smaller version of that.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Tina Payden, who will be followed by Sarah Rathbun.
Good evening. The original foster school at 2010, Dewey, opened its doors in 1905. This school was the only place where many of the black residents of the 5th Ward were allowed to attend school. After closing foster school in 1967, in an attempt to dissegregate the school, a magnet school, King Lab, took its place in 1969. White students were bused into the school, and black students were bused out. Finally, King Lab closed its doors around 1978, and I had to attend Skiles to finish school, now the current home of King Arts. In 1982, Family Focus began leasing the building, and in 1984 acquired the property through donation. In 2018, the Family Focus building was declared a landmark. In 2022, Family Focus received $3 million ARPA funds from the city of Evanston for remodeling. According to the article with the Daily Northwestern, Family Focus also received $1.13 million from the office of Jan Chikowski and another $1 million from the Illinois Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity, which totals a little over $5 million for remodeling. Also, the article continues to state that the renovations would cost around $12 million, and they were set to be finished before the end of 2026, around the same time as the 5th Ward school completion. It appears that Family Focus did not have any plans on remodeling, but holding out with the city of Evanston in order to create an eminent domain situation, like the Henry Butler Building on Emerson Street, which was a landmark and was torn down to make way for the NU City of Evanston Research Park and decimated the black neighborhood. Family Focus has 11 locations throughout Illinois, including Evanston. The city should not be paying its bills nor partnering for selling the building. The building should go before a joint meeting with the Preservation Committee, Reparations Committee, and Equity and Empowerment to ensure fair equity and transparency for this community. I live on Emerson. And the city of Evanston took my black neighbors for eminent domain, and I'm the only one left. And now you're trying to do it here in the 5th Ward with Wesley, with Family Focus, and this city calls themselves fair and equitable? You have totally demolished any history we have. E2 is where the Butler Building, which was a landmark, a landmark, and nobody even knows about it. You better get yourselves together and do the right thing and deny the city partnering with Family Focus, and let them pay their own bills and send this before Preservation, Reparations, Equity, and Empowerment.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Sarah Rathbun.
I'm gonna forfeit my time to a representative of Main Street who isn't on this list, but you're registered online.
Mm-hmm. Yep.
Can I do that?
Okay, we split half and half?
Either way, as long as she's registered, everyone's gonna get called on, so there's no need to forfeit time.
I'll go first. Thank you, Sarah. My name is Susanna. I'm one of the owners of Dave's Down to Earth Rock Shop on 711 Main Street in Evanston. We've been in Evanston for about 55 years. Not me personally, but my brother-in-law. We are here today to talk about the project that's been scheduled to go up in 912 Custer. We've been knowing for about, maybe a year, year and a half? You guys might know the numbers better than me, but... Or the timeframe, but that there was going to be a building built behind us, which we come to, you know, agreement... Not agreement, but we, you know, welcome them to the community. The only problem we have is that on November 11th, we were told that we were going to... That we... That they were gonna start building the building. So we're all being very grateful that, okay, maybe they won't start until January, February, or March, whatever, because we kind of had a lot of stuff going on on Main Street over the last four years, as you might all be aware of. Then on November 17th, we got another email saying that the start date would be December 10th. December 16th, they're going to start doing pile driving. I don't know if any of you guys have ever experienced pile driving, but pile driving's like a jar, like your body just goes crazy, because the whole building shakes. It's really kind of disturbing when it happens, and we know we have to deal with it, but by the time we're notified that they were going to start on December 16th, we already had our schedule set for the stores. Everybody on Main Street who've had problems for the retail businesses, as well as the people, the residents who live there, have been, you know, just had a lot of struggles during the last four years. And when we heard that that was gonna happen, we had personally set up our, you know, employees and our staff in plenty of time, 30 days in advance of the holiday starting. We have no way of telling people, oh, you gotta go home, because they're gonna start pile driving, nor can we afford to close down a store in the month of December when we do 20... We, Dave's Rock Shop, does 20% of their business. It's just uncalled for. So I'm happy to say that on November 20th, my husband and I decided to go up and down the block on the 700 block on Main Street. We collected quite a few signatures, and we also had some of our staff go down on the 900 block of Sherman, and they collected signatures as well, too. On November 21st, I dropped off copies of the signatures from A Abyss and for you, Jonathan, as well. Thank you for taking them. And, you know, I had about 80 signatures. It might not seem like a lot of signatures, but it was kind of like a last-minute kind of ditch, like, come on, let's just wait till January 1st. And then we could... In addition to that, we connected... Collected an additional 37 signatures that I have with me today. And we've had neighbors stop in. I mean, we've had people that live on Custer saying, oh, my gosh, if we can just make it through the holiday season, because we know this is gonna be tough. We dealt with it when the building across the street from us was built, and that was tough to get through, but at least we knew about it in plenty of advance. This, I don't feel we have been given enough notice. We needed more notice, but at least we could decide if we wanted to close down on certain days or... And I will say that Mick Snyder, who runs... He doesn't run the project. He's their outreach person for the project, has been good about trying to accommodate us in some ways. When they start on the 16th, they said they would start far on the north side to not disturb the retail businesses as little as possible, but I think, once again, when such a big project starts, wouldn't they have known way in advance when they were gonna start, or at least don't schedule it during the holidays? I think you guys are talking about building other buildings in the city of Evanston. You should really reach out more to our small business owners. We know we don't maybe supply a lot to the, you know, the general, you know, area, but we've been here for many years, and so have many of the people on my block that are commercial businesses. So I just wanted to point out the timeline, so you're all aware how tough this is on all of us, and I wish they could wait till the beginning of the new year, and then we'll be more than happy to welcome them. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. This concludes the sheet of folks who signed up to speak in person. We now move to the online public comments, beginning with the Niles Coalition, who will be followed by Carlos Sutton, and then Mike Myers. Ah, okay. Sorry, we'll begin with Carlos...
Let me call you back up on TV. Thank you.
All right, we'll go... We'll begin with... Sorry, Mr. Sutton, what was that?
Yes, I was just answering a phone call. Happy Holidays. Good evening.
Yep, so it's gonna be you, followed by Mike Myers, and then Tricia Connolly. Go ahead, Mr. Sutton.
Thank you. Good evening, mayor, city manager, and the clerk. I'm very concerned that an agreed proposal this evening entitled 68R25 is going to try to be voted on. I'm requesting that you remove it from the agenda. I am very concerned with the importance of this being considered tonight regarding the status of Family Focus without a special call meeting of the ward to discuss this travesty of the status of the Family Focus building, considered a landmark. The appearance of rush has a significant adverse effect on our ward. Should we be addressed or voted on without any significant input from concerned members in our community? I think it's mandated at this time that you cancel this vote tonight and reschedule for a special meeting for the 5th Ward. This is so exasperating, coming here year after year, making requests and never having them implemented. We are also emphasizing development seems to be more important than citizens and their input and anticipation. I know we are the least-voting ward in the city to participate in local elections. I know of decreasing availability of affordable housing in our ward is not one of your priorities. Neither is homeownership by your refusal to recommend or implement land trust. I know you are not sensitive to the eradication and removal of historical black landmarks in our community. For example, Foster School, the Masonic Temple, the Butler Livery, the Community Hospital converted, all of these were insignificant contributions of black citizens in the ward to this city. We, as black landlords, saw the ARPA money go to restaurants and to buildings, and what was supposed to be designed for citizens, not one penny was given to black landlords that always afford below-market-rate units to maintain a black presence in our ward. Now you're considering a vote tonight on the final day as nail in the coffin of the 5th Ward. This is an insult and a prediction of what more important to the 5th Ward. Developers are more important than people. The discrimination that you're imposing upon us tonight in the closing days of 2025 is frightening. Will the last black resident of the 5th Ward, please turn off the lights when you leave? Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Mike Myers, who will be followed by Tricia Connolly, and then Christine Bray.
Hello, is this working?
Sure is.
Hello. Happy Holidays to one and all. I'm representing the Evanston Dog Beach, and I want to thank you in advance for reconsidering the Smith Group proposal for the ADA ramp to the Dog Beach and asking GEI to do a proposal as well, since they came up with a much more efficient, smarter, more effective plan. So I think now we'll have two great options, and I appreciate you being open to looking at both of them. Once again, Happy Holidays, and see you next year at the Dog Beach.
The next speaker is Tricia Connolly, who will be followed by Christine Bray.
Hello, Tricia Connolly, second ward. First of all, I would like to reiterate what David said, beginning the public comment this evening. Listen, we need less, not more militarization of our police force. You know, we're Evanston. Come on, guys. And this is the move by Axon to, you know, secure money for their movement with their shareholders. I mean, you can look online and read all about it. That shouldn't be our goal. Our goal here is to take care of our residents and do right by them. And we do have the feds in town, and the implications of what kind of services this company is going to add to our Evanston Police Department is perhaps struggling. We don't know, as to David's point, anything about that. There is no transparency. And on that note, you know, maybe we should start sniffing around on NIPS, because that collaboration we've got going is also not transparent, and in these times, we more than ever need some transparency to keep the community safe. So I would ask that you please put this contract on hold. On A-23, I just want to give a shout-out to councilmembers Kelly, Davis, Sufferton, Rogers, and Burns for bringing this back. This is an important action on behalf of the community. We need to be looking at the best ways of getting our needs met with this Dog Beach without blowing out the budget. And I am looking forward to GEI being also one of the companies that's looked at, and I'm looking forward to questioning this retaining law. We don't have that anywhere else. I don't know why we have it here, and I think that's a bigger question when we get to the comprehensive lakefront plan. So thank you for your time. Good night.
The final... Sorry. The final speaker is Christine Bray.
Jay, I'll be inflexible with that. The purple line was happening a moment tonight. So I'm here today to address an issue that I think all of us are gonna be familiar with: the rising cost of cars. Cars are more expensive than they've ever been. More Americans are in default on auto loans than before. Monthly payments are high. The loan terms just keep getting longer, and at the center of it, we know what the problem is: greedy car dealerships, many not even owned by people in Evanston, are profiting off of Evanstonians. We need to ensure that these corporations are not just profiting off of Evanston, but contributing to it. Additionally, it's clear that although some car dealerships may like making money off of inferior or ugly cars, that they're ruining the character of many neighborhoods with these inferior products. To that end, Evanston should ensure that small or ugly cars are only sold to residents living in areas that they are appropriate for. New cars approved for sale in family neighborhoods should be family cars. You cannot fit a family in a Prius. They should not be sold in family areas. And when small cars are sold, we know that developer... Dealerships, sorry, my bad. Like selling small cars, because they can fit more of them on their lot, but they do environmental damage. They increase traffic. They decrease community well-being and the appeal. Because of this, we should require perch... Sorry. Dealers of small cars to pay community benefits to make up for it. Every small car dealer should be required to pay $500 for the community yard if they sell a Prius, perhaps some money for an environmental fund, perhaps some money for streets. We know that cars damage streets, of course. If a car is particularly different than one that like existing neighborhood cars, the dealer should have to go through a months-long process of community meeting to get approval of the community for the type, the design, the color of the car, to make sure that it is not offending anyone. Only by doing this can we prevent greedy auto dealers from profiting off of Evanston and keep car prices down. I think that would help keep car prices down. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Will the clerk please add Councilmember Nusma to the roll? So what I'd like to do now, as we've been doing in recent meetings, to give folks who may be unnecessarily here an opportunity to be necessarily somewhere else, is handle the consent... The uncontroversial portion of the consent agenda first. So is there anything that folks would like to remove from the consent agenda this evening?
A-2, A... And A-23, and A-22?
A-2, A-22, A-23.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to remove A-24.
A-24? Any further removals? Seeing none, I would happily entertain a motion at this time.
Mr. Mayor, I will move the consent agenda, which does not include items A-22... A-2, A-22, A-23, and A-24.
Second.
Councilmember Nusma moves adoption of the consent agenda with the following four exceptions: items A-2, A-22, A-23, and A-24. Councilmember Harris, seconds. Will the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Davis? Here. Councilmember Rogers?
True, but also not applicable.
Irony. Oh, yes. Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Harakaris?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Isles?
Aye.
Councilmember Nusma?
Aye.
Councilmember Sufferton?
With eight voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries, and the consent agenda with the four exceptions previously enumerated is adopted. There's been a request from some councilmembers to do the executive session next, again with the idea of getting... Avoiding people having to stay very, very late for one brief item. I'm happy to do that, or not, as the council prefers. Is there a motion to do the executive session now?
So moved.
I think that's a... That's a motion that we gotta... I think we get in trouble if we don't read in full.
I will do this in full parts. Pursuant to five Illinois compiled statutes, 120/2, I move that the city council convene into executive session to discuss agenda items regarding the purchase or use of real property and minutes. These agenda items are permitted subjects to be considered in an executive session and are enumerated exceptions under the Open Meetings Act as set forth in 5 ILC House 120/2, Sections C5 and C21.
Second.
Councilmember Nusma moves the city council resolve itself into an executive session for the reasons just enumerated. Councilmember Harris, seconds. Will the clerk please take the roll? Nope, nope, nope. This is a debatable motion. Councilmember Rogers?
I just have a question. So we're going into executive session for an indeterminate amount of time, and we're asking residents to wait on us? We discuss the issues that they're here to discuss?
That is correct. I indicated that there are arguments on both sides of this. I would say...
I want to clarify.
I would just say that if I were a member of the council and voting on this and voting yes, I would then endeavor to have a very efficient executive session, because I think if we go in there for 20 minutes and work out some issues and come back here, that's acceptable. If we go in there for an hour and a half while people sit here and wait for the issue they came to watch, I think that's pretty rude. Will the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Davis?
No.
Councilmember Rogers?
No.
Councilmember Harakaris?
No.
Councilmember Kelly?
No.
Councilmember Harris?
No.
Councilmember Isles?
No.
Councilmember Nusma?
No.
Councilmember Sufferton?
With one voting in favor and seven voting against, the motion fails, and the city council does not resolve itself into an executive session. The next item on the agenda is special orders of business... Sorry, Councilmember Rogers, do you have a...
If I could just make a suggestion of that it's something we want to do, I would suggest we schedule it as part of our regular meeting schedule, so people know, hopefully, when we'll get to city council roughly. If we're scheduling it early, it would fall in behind APW, PND, executive session, then our regular council.
Well, it's on the agenda as such. I think the point is, you might... In that situation, we might want to... We might want to name on the agenda how many minutes we expect it to be, and then hold ourselves to that. This brings us to special orders of business. The recommendation, given the urgency relative to potential continuing federal activity, is that this item be introduced and acted upon at once this evening. Is there a motion to suspend the rule to permit that?
So moved.
Second.
Councilmember... Councilmember, um, Davis moves to suspend Rule 20.1-ish, uh, so that Ordinance 75-0-25 can be introduced and passed, uh, on the same evening. Councilmember Newsma, seconds. Will the clerk please take the role on the motion to suspend the rules?
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Rogers?
Aye.
Councilmember Haddakaris?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Isles?
Aye.
Councilmember Newsma?
Aye.
Councilmember Suffertin?
Aye.
With eight voting in favor and none voting against, the motion receives the required unanimous support and rule, the rule in question is suspended so that Ordinance 75-0-25 may be introduced and acted upon on the same evening. Would the clerk please add Councilmember Burns to the roll? Now, is there a motion relative to item SP1?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I will move item SP1, Ordinance 75-0-25, amending Title I, Chapter 22, the Welcoming City Ordinance.
Second. Councilmember Newsma moves, uh, passage, which is to say introduction and action upon Ordinance 75-0-25. Councilmember Haddakaris, seconds. Will the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Rogers?
Aye.
Councilmember Haddakaris?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Councilmember Isles?
Aye.
Councilmember Newsma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Suffertin?
With nine voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries and Ordinance 75-0-25 is passed. Now, on the items moved from the consent agenda, Councilmember Kelly, do you have a motion relative to item A2?
I do. I'd like to move item A2, approval of the 2026 City Council Rules Committee meeting schedule.
Second. Councilmember Kelly moves approval of the 2026 Council, uh, and rules schedule. Councilmember Harris, seconds. Councilmember Kelly?
I only pulled this off because I've been hearing for years, um, frustrations from residents that the three main taxing bodies all meet on the same night. And so I don't expect us to change this now, but I wonder if we can visit, um, you know, it seems like maybe if 202 and 65 meet on the same night, it's not as bad because not a lot of parents necessarily have students at both districts. But it would be nice if we could consider looking at a date, a day. I don't know if we could do it this year or experiment with maybe three months or a part of the year. So I just wanted to mention that because I've been hearing about it forever and it's, and this just reminded me of it.
Yeah, I to- totally agree. Um, personally, I think that we probably should start talking now for 2027 or start talking in the, in the spring or summer for 2027. But it's, it's silly. There's, there's no reason for it. And I, I think everybody has a certain amount of ego about waiting for someone else to fix it. And there's no reason we can't just be the ones to change. Councilmember Harris?
I agree. Um, 2027 would be the time, us for, to look now because I've cleared my schedule to make sure I can make 2026. We have, um, different committee meetings that we'd have to adjust in the future. So if we start looking now for 2027, that makes sense. But 26, to me, we, we just can't change the meetings that we already have on the calendars.
Would the clerk please take the roll?
Just quick-
Nope, sorry, nope.
Do we need to, um, like direct staff to look into that or to bring something back at some point? Just so that we make sure we get, we move forward with that?
Luke?
Would that be in line or?
Um, thank you for the question, Councilmember. Um, I think from a staff perspective, I think we're very open to contemplating perhaps a Tuesday evening schedule for 2027. So we're happy to look further into it and address any conflicts that may arise.
Great. So you'll bring that back at some point?
Yes.
Okay. Terrific. Thank you.
Great. Great idea. Thank you. And now, will the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Rogers?
Aye.
Councilmember Haddakaris?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly? Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Isles?
Aye.
Councilmember Newsma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Suffertin?
With nine voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries and the two meeting schedules are adopted. Now on item A22, Councilmember Kelly, do you have a motion?
I'd like to move item A22. Approval of a contract with Axon Enterprise Incorporated for the Evanston Police Body Warn Camera Program.
Second.
Councilmember Kelly moves approval of this contract. Councilmember Harris, seconds. Uh, it sounds like we have a presentation from Deputy Chief, right?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Evening, Mayor Bis, City Councilmembers, Clerk Mendoza, City Manager Stowe, Jody Wright, Deputy Chief of Police. Uh, the Police Department respectfully requests that the City Council approves a contract renewal with Axon for Police Body Warn Camera Program and its related software and hardware. The Evanston Police Department partnership with Axon goes back to 2010 when we first adopted tasers to support safer or controlled use of force options in 2017. In 2017, we expanded it to body worn camera program for the Patrol Division. And by 2018, we completed full implementation by adding in-car cameras, interview room recordings, and unlimited digital storage through evidence.com. In 2022, we renewed the contract to keep pace with rising demands, upgrading our tasers, adding automated redaction assistant to handle the increased FOIA volume, and adopting Axon standards as an early intervention system. Over time, the relationship has grown from single-purpose tools to a full ecosystem that supports accountability, safety, and efficient evidence handling across the department. The Evanston Police Department currently has a five-year Officer Safety Seven Plan with Axon set to expire on April of 2027. It's common for agencies to upgrade early to expand and streamline services under a new agreement, just as we did in 2022. Expanding technology solutions under a new contract will enable the Police Department to enhance officer and community safety, strengthen situational awareness, and increase operational efficiency to improve community impact. With this new contract, the Police Department gains access to cutting-edge tools, maximizes bundling and volume-based incentives, and shields against year-over-year cost increases. So why Axon? For more than 15 years, Axon has been a proven partner to EPD, consistently delivering reliable technology and long-term support. They provide end-to-end customer service with dedicated teams for training, deployment, and ongoing improvements, which keep our systems dependable and our staff prepared. Their broad integrated ecosystem brings body worn cameras, digital evidence, real-time operations, and other critical tools into one platform that reduces complexity and strengthens our outcomes across the department. Axon also maintains a strong commitment to responsible technology and data governance, which aligns with the community expectations and our agency's priorities. Today, Axon supports more than 80% of officers across Illinois, which gives us constant confidence in their, both their stability and their ability to meet statewide standards. Important system safeguards that currently exist, so comprehensive audit trails, every login, every access to evidence, evidence sharing, configuration changes, video viewing, all that is logged and stored to support chain of custody and agency oversight. There are role-based access controls. System permissions are distributed based on need and role within the organization. No member is granted access beyond what's needed for their position and their assignment. There's tamper-proof evidence storage. Files cannot be altered when creating, without creating a new version and logging that event in the system. There is no national registry or access to Evanston's evidence stored within evidence.com. There is no ability for other agencies across the US to access our evidence whatsoever. Warrant subpoenas and FOIA requests are always routed through the agency as data owners if presented to Axon. Axon never discloses data or responds on behalf of an agency. So the Evanston Police Department and the city owns all the data that's stored in, in evidence.com. As previously stated, customer data is never so mined or shared with other parties. All data is securely stored within the Microsoft Azure Government Cloud and is hosted domestically here in the United States. Data security is compliant with Criminal Justice Information Service, Federal Risk and Authorization Management Program, and other public safety relevant frameworks validated through regular third-party audits. In the 15 years working with Axon, this department is not aware of any public, publicly-reported data breaches impacting Axon's core evidence management services. This top paragraph here was taken directly from Axon's Master Services and Purchasing Agreement. And it states, "Customer controls and owns all rights, title, and interest in customer content." Except as outlined herein, Axon obtains no interest in customer content, and customer content is not Axon's business record. Customer is solely responsible for uploading, sharing, managing, and deleting customer content. Axon will only have access to customer content for limited purposes set forth within. Axon's only access to customer content is to perform troubleshooting, maintenance, and diagnostic screenings, and to enforce this agreement or policies governing the use of their products. Once again, they will not produce any agency evidence, videos, records, or user activity logs to third parties based on subpoenas served on them.
Thank you, Deputy Chief Wright. Um, good evening, Mayor Bis, members of City Council, Clerk Mendoza, City Manager Stowe, Alex Ruggie Corporation Council. Um, body worn cameras assist multiple departments within the city, and one of those departments being the Law Department. Um, so a few ways body worn camera footage assists the Law Department is in litigation assistance when the city, um, is met with potential civil lawsuits or actual filed civil lawsuits. Um, we utilize the body camera footage to, um, present our defense to the lawsuits. And I would even argue that courts and juries now actually expect video footage of every incident. Um, and, and it is a big defense mechanism for the city. It also assists us if we can review the situation and assess potential for liability and essen- essentially look at the case, um, for potential liability on the city's behalf. Uh, the body worn camera footage also helps the local state's attorney's office in prosecuting crimes. A lot of judges and juries in criminal court as well rely on that video evidence. As Deputy Chief Wright said, um, the video evidence is stored the same way any other evidence is. So when you bring it to court, you have to have a chain of custody for that evidence. Um, it's incredibly important for the city when we have civil lawsuits or for the state's attorney's office when they're using the video for prosecution to have that chain of custody and evidence to prove that the videos haven't been tampered with and to prove that they came from the source that they said. So the security and everything that Deputy Chief Wright mentioned is essential to the city, uh, and to the county in more ways than one. Uh, the other way in which the body worn camera, um, assistance through Axon assists the city is their redaction software. So, um, the city follows the Body Warn Camera Act, which is an act implemented by the state legislature. And it allows only certain videos to be released via FOIA. And it also mandates that people within the video, if they're not involved in the incident, if they're not the person under arrest or the person subject to the video, that their images be redacted for their own privacy. Um, so if you have an incident with 10 people, 10 residents, they're just all standing there. We need to redact their image in every video. If there's three officers on scene, that's three different body worn camera videos. They can spend 20 minutes, two hours, three hours. So redaction of this video is extremely time-consuming. Uh, the redaction software from Axon allows us to do this relatively quickly. Um, and the city has seen an increase in FOIA requests for this video footage, getting hundreds, if not thousands, of FOIA requests a year for this footage. So this significantly assists us in complying with both the Body Warn Camera Act and FOIA.
So the current contract already includes body worn cameras, in-car cameras, unlimited evidence storage with software support such as redaction assistant and Axon standards. This new contract intends to keep all of those services with the following upgrades and additions. An upgrade to TASER 10, which delivers better accuracy and greater deployment distances, increasing officer safety. They included VR training officers, the ability to hone in their TASER skills in a virtual training environment. Additionally, the VR trainer includes a community engagement training app that allows officers to enhance empathy skills. The addition of FUSES, a real-time information center, which pulls city-owned and Axon cameras into one unified viewing pane, improving operational efficiency and providing real-time information during special or critical events. Drone as an infrastructure, an upgrade to NuSky D-10 drones that are smaller than our current drone and is equipped with updated technology, giving officers readily accessible drone that they can deploy with these. Our current drone is much larger, heavier, and slower. It requires a special purpose vehicle to safely transport the drone and its camera attachment in a protective case. It requires some assembly prior to deploying, making it not optimal for public safety deployment. Lady, the drone has been inoperable, requiring frequent diagnostics and repairs. The addition of CounterDrone D-drone software, which detects unauthorized drones operating near the city, strengthening situational awareness and preparedness during special events. So I want to take a moment to clear up, uh, some, few misconceptions about this technology. One FUSES does not give us access to private cameras without an owner's consent. There's no way we can access anyone's camera, uh, privately without their consent. Our drones are not weaponized. They cannot carry not even a less lethal tool such as a TASER. CounterDrone and D-drone, D-drone detection tools, uh, CounterDrone and D-drone are simply detection tools. They identify drones in the area, but they do not have the ability to disable or bring down foreign drones. None of the cameras we are purchasing includes facial recognition capabilities. Our body worn camera videos are retained in accordance- There we are. Our body worn camera videos are retained in accordance, in according to state statute as allowed, as outlined in the Body Warn Camera Act. Other than the exceptions permitted by state law, video captured on body worn camera must be retained for 90 days and then is mandated to be destroyed afterwards. Initial use of the NuSky D-10 drones will be used in the same manner as we currently deploy drones today. With time, the Police Department will build upon our current unmanned aerial system to include drone as a first response, staying aligned with the Freedom for Drone Surveillance Act. FUSES integration will consist of Axon along with city-owned cameras being utilized for police operations. EPD will not enter into any agency-to-agency sharing of our camera system.
Initial use of the NuSky-
The new agreement gives us strong bundling and volume benefits. The ecosystem is fully interoperable,[1798.20] The ecosystem is fully interoperable, bringing devices, software, and real-time systems together in one platform that reduces complexity and strengthens efficiency with unified support, security, and training. All of this is anchored by predictable locked-in multi-year pricing that stabilizes the budget and delivers long-term value for the city. Life-cycle protections are built in with guaranteed hardware refreshes and continuous software upgrades that keep us current and give us access to emerging capabilities at no additional cost. The contract includes multiple hardware refreshes to prevent obsolescence, each aligned with the expected useful life of the equipment. Our body-worn cameras will have three refreshes, one approximately every two and a half years. Our fleet system will have two refreshes, one at the two-and-a-half-year mark and another at the end of the contract. TASER devices will be refreshed once at the five-year mark, and our VR and drone technologies will be refreshed included to maintain current hardware standards. Over the past year, the police department ran a full evaluation to determine the best path forward. We reviewed three program frameworks and examined eight variations of each to see how well they match operational goals and community expectations. Our internal team also held four hands-on sessions, including demonstrations, flight days, and field trials to confirm how each option performed in real conditions. After this work, the joint team reached a recommendation now before council tonight. So this renewal lays out predictable pricing over the contract term. If we try to buy cameras, storage, and software separately, the costs will be higher and far less stable with renewals. Axon's pricing structure locks in the rate, so the city is not hit with unexpected spikes. At the city's request, Axon provided contract opt-outs options after years three and six. These protections come on top of the standard opt-out clause already included through source well pricing, giving the city even more flexibility and financial control. The 2026 cost is budget-neutral and matches the payment already planned under our current contract. In the following years, the pricing increase has gradually given us time to plan and absorb the changes year to year. Delaying the execution into early '26 may raise costs. Axon reviews and adjusts pricing every year. If Evanston PD secure the proposal before the end of the year, the agency avoids an unexpected or an expected 8% increase. That increase would total about $470,000 over the full contract of roughly $67,000 per year. Approval of this renewal ensures safer officers, protected residents, secure evidence, and stable costs for the city. These tools are no longer optional. They are part of how we meet legal requirements and maintain trust. The police department respectfully asks, "At the council approves Axon contract renewal, so we can continue delivering the level of service our community expects." That concludes my presentation. Thank you for your time, and I am ready for any questions you may have.
Counselor Davis.
For the cameras that will be on the cars, are those subject to the same laws that are set on the state level for body cameras? Or is it separate? Like, is it different?
So the answer is yes. Those fleet cameras, they don't capture all the information that a body-worn camera would capture. But we do, in our system, the system, the permissions are set. So those videos are deleted along with the body-worn camera footage. So whatever permissions are set for body-worn camera, the accompanying fleet camera videos delete at the same time. A perfect example would be a traffic stop, routine, just a petty offense and a ticket issue. By statute, those body-worn camera interactions, so the interaction between the police officer and the motorist must be deleted 90 days after that interaction. The accompanying fleet camera that's attached to that interaction is set with the same permission. So when that body-worn camera footage is deleted, the camera from the car is also deleted with it. So they're synced together. The interaction is synced together.
So I understand that the way we set it is the same. My question is if we were legally required to do the same for the cars? I think that might be a question for Alex, yeah.
Thank you, Councilmember Davis. So the fleet cameras are not subject to the Body-Worn Camera Act legislation passed by the state. They don't record audio, and they're usually stationary, but they are, so they are subject to release far more often. They have a different retention schedule as well, but they are stored in Evidence.com to be utilized in civil lawsuits as well as criminal lawsuits. But, and then the sharing is also restricted as well. But they don't follow the same release guidelines as the body-worn camera.
Okay, but the retention policy is the same as the body-worn camera? I mean, the retention policy that we are using is the same.
The retention policy for those fleet cameras is different based on state law, but we still follow the state law retention policy for those videos. It's not the 90 days or kept until the litigation has ended. It's slightly different.
Okay, so, and those cameras are always recording as the officers are driving around, like?
I believe they flip on when the lights and sirens come on. That's when they start recording. And it usually has a backdate of 30 seconds. So that's the same as the body-worn camera. So an officer, the camera is always there, so when they push the button, it'll go 30 seconds back to capture the video, but it does not capture the audio. So the audio is usually delayed about 30 seconds on all of the body-worn camera video because it backdates that video footage, just not the audio. But both start 30 seconds prior to when the lights and sirens go on. The body-worn camera Axon videos are also, they automatically go on. So if there's multiple officers on scene and one officer turns them on, it turns on all of them within a certain radius. It automatically turns on the camera as well if the TASER is deployed, which is why the TASER and the cameras working together is really important. We've not had issue with our officers remembering to turn on the cameras, but it's really nice to have those safeguards in place so that we know that they're always on.
Okay, that's good to know because one of my concerns was that we were maybe being overzealous in our recording, and there might be privacy concerns if no crimes are happening. If we're only using them when the police lights are going on and the police officers have some type of activity, then I think that's very reasonable and I think sounds good. And that was actually my only question. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Rogers, followed by Nusma.
Yes, thank you. Quick question. There's an opt-out at three years and six years, I think you said?
Correct.
Is there any sort of a, and this is maybe a question for counsel, is there any sort of an exit clause or an escape clause? We ran into this with FLOC, where we sort of stopped, and then they came out, put cameras back up. And if we were to catch them violating the agreements of this contract, is there a way for us to end the contract immediately or within 30 days? Or something along those lines as opposed to having to wait for the three-to-six-year period for us to act?
Absolutely. So there's a breach of contract clause. So if either party breaches the contract, whether it's non-payment by the city or violation of the contract by Axon, there's a 30-day notification. In any standard contract, there's an ability to cure the breach. If we determine that the breach is incurable, then the cancellation would stand. What we requested of Axon, based on what we've learned from FLOC and other situations, is that we wanted an opt-out for convenience. So essentially, an ability to opt out of the contract because we feel like it. And so Axon was actually willing to do that at the three-year and the six-year mark because this is a seven-year contract. I will say that's not standard in the industry. It's not standard for most contracts I've seen, especially when you're leasing equipment like this. And Axon had to take it up, I think, all the way to the top to get that approval. But I think based on their long-term relationship with us, they were willing to do that.
And while I'm speaking to you, because this is probably more legal than police, it was mentioned that subpoenas and FOIAs have to be approved by us.
That's correct.
So we, there is no operation under which a court could order a subpoena without our knowledge?
Correct. And so Axon does not even have the ability to comply with that subpoena because they don't own the data. So even though, you know, it's their system, they don't have the ability to log in and send out our videos. They don't have that ability at all.
If they were subpoenaed, they would have to seek our approval in order to release any information for subpoena, FOIA, et cetera?
Yeah, they wouldn't, they wouldn't respond to the subpoena at all. They would just transfer it to the city of Evanston and say, "We're in receipt of the subpoena. You have to comply." And that's part of our contractual requirements, is that we would comply with a subpoena that Axon received for our data.
Okay. And the final thing is, there's an audit you mentioned in terms of keeping track of all activity, a log, let's call it. Is that something that we have access to at any given time?
Yes. So, and I can let Deputy Chief Wright respond as well, but I've had to provide the audit trail logs. So, you know, say we get a FOIA request for body camera footage, the footage is gone, and someone appeals that to the PAC, I can provide that audit trail of even when the system automatically, after that 90-day period deletes a video, there's an audit trail of that. So I've utilized that audit immediately to provide that to the PAC in response, but I can let Deputy Chief Wright respond as well.
Thank you, Alex. The audit trail is very extensive. There is no action that you can do in the system that's not, you know, tracked, stored, logged for us to have the ability to see. The system is actually intricate enough where you could set parameters to have it audit or track suspicious behavior. So if there was, you know, hypothetically, someone trying to gain access to a portion of the system that they didn't have the ability to do it, you could set an audit trail or set a parameters in the system that would track that suspicious behavior. If you had someone that was probably reviewing or trying to gain access to restricted information or viewing a video, whatever parameters you said, viewing a video hundreds of times, you know, it could alert you that this officer has viewed this video X amount of times, and you can go ahead and take a look at the video to see what's on there that the officer has interest in looking so many times.
And is the audit, do we get an alert? For example, I go in, I try to access something I don't have access to. Do we just have to wait and try to catch that in the audit? Or is there an alert that goes out to either Axon or us or both that would say, you know, "Hey, there's been an attempt at unauthorized access"?
So for certain accesses, the alert would have to be set. Now, if it's someone that's tampering with the system, I would probably have to, I've never, as a department admin, received an alert of someone trying to tamper with the system. It's almost, or probably say, not possible based on the permissions that are set for our users that are in the system. Now, as far as, you know, someone outside of our organization trying to tamper with the system, that would be probably an IT-related, you know, question. But never am I, since I have been admin in the system, have an alert like that, you know, populated or been alerted to something like that.
Yeah, I just was more curious about whether we have to wait for the audit to try to catch something or if there's a preemptive thing that happens where, like, you know, my credit card tries to get used somewhere, and my credit card company calls me and says, "Hey, did you make this authorization?", and I say yes or no, and then they'll decline it or... And it wouldn't be necessarily a decline or accept, but it would be more so that we just, we would be alerted and know that somebody is trying to do something with the data.
Okay. Just to answer your question, alerts can be set in the system to predict something like that. We don't have any set. I would probably have to defer to either IT or Axon's IT to get a direct and more concise answer to that question.
I just think that would be something that would be beneficial if it sounds like that's something that can be done. Definitely, we need to do it. All right, thank you.
Councilmember Nusma Haddakaris-Kelly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So no disagreement. We need the body-worn cameras. That's a state requirement, so no question about that. We talked about the cost of this and alternative, you know, potential alternative procurement scenarios at the Finance and Budget Committee recently. I'm convinced that Axon is the way to go, for better or for worse, given their essential kind of lock on the market here and the fact that the various components interact with each other. So eventually, we're going to end up with Axon. I do have some questions, though, about data sharing and about the FUSIS system. So data sharing first. If you could go back to that slide, there was a phrase, "Except as outlined herein." And I, so I just want to make sure what those exceptions are. And is the herein limited to that paragraph right there? Or is there, is that referred to a larger document where there might be other enumerated exceptions? I don't know if that's a question for Deputy Chief Wright or for Corporation Counsel.
So the herein, if you look at, hey, so they would have access to our content for troubleshooting, maintenance, diagnostic screening. That's the herein. So for those reasons, they would have access to our data.
Right there, in that paragraph. There's not another paragraph in the contract itself?
No, no, none that I'm aware of.
Okay, thank you. Another question about, before we get into FUSIS, who was on the joint team that kind of evaluated options and made this recommendation?
Who was on the joint team?
Yeah.
So we use subject matter experts. So when we evaluated the TASER 10, Axon representatives came to the police department. We used myself and our TASER instructors to evaluate the upgrades that were done to the TASER 10. Same thing with the drone. Subject matter experts within the police department. Part of our drone team went out to evaluate the Skydio drone. So as it relates to some of the other things, like the standards and the redactions, we use, you know, the personnel within our department who uses those systems to determine.
Is the folks who use the...
The folks who use the system.
The software and the hardware every day were the ones who...
Subject matter experts internally.
Evaluating these options. Great. So the change, in addition to costing a lot more, the change from our current contract to the proposed future contract, it's the same, each contract has body-worn cameras, each contract has drones, each contract has the, you know, the cloud storage and the FOIA, you know, capabilities. One thing that's not in the current contract that is in the proposed contract is this FUSIS system.
Correct.
And I want to make sure we understand what that includes, what that entails, what, you know, risks there might be to the data that that's collected, like, how is that system going to be used? Does it constitute warrantless surveillance? And how can we protect, you know, members of the public from, you know, inappropriate use of that FUSIS system? And I'm still trying to get my head wrapped around exactly what that system is.
Okay. I'm going to try to just use, I guess, the simplest approach or answer that I can give you. And if you need more, I'll do my best to give it to you. So imagine you have like four or five, like, you're in an EOC. You have like four or five, you know, 50-inch monitors altogether, you know, showing one single, acting as one single pane.
EOC, Emergency Operations Center.
Sorry, Emergency Operations Center. So imagine that, and then imagine we have an incident and our officers are on scene as well as fleet vehicles, and all of our cameras are going. We also have city-owned cameras, you know, through milestone that servers are on-site that IT manages. We can pull... We can pull all of those cameras into one single screen for operational efficiency. So if we're responding to a critical incident, uh, an example I used, uh, last week, if we have something at, you know, Fountain Square or anywhere in the city where we have an abundance of cameras, we don't have to click from camera to camera in order to get a big picture of what's going on at that incident. FUSIS pulls everything into one single viewing pane for our analysts, investigative detectives to be able to see what's going on right now, uh, at this incident, you know, for operational awareness. Uh, the technology that's built into it, uh, uh, is limited AI technology where if we were looking for, let's just say, a subject with a red hat or, you know, someone in a gun, the AI technology overlay contained within that system, instead of me searching a video, you know, going through, seeing if I can see someone with a red hat, we can type that into a system and the AI overlay can search those hundreds of videos at one time and bring that information right back to the user. Uh, as far as, uh, I think you said, like, you know, Big Brother or abuse of the system, we don't have control over any cameras that we don't already have control over. So we wouldn't be bringing any, uh, outside cameras. These cameras that we'd be bringing in, we already have access to them. It would just be pulling those cameras, those set cameras, you know, for a specific incident or for a specific purpose.
Now, my understanding is the system could accommodate privately-owned cameras that, you know, register and are approved, and, you know, so that EPD could pull in, theoretically pull in, in, uh, the visual footage from cameras that we don't own?
That, that's correct.
Now, do we have a policy about that? Do we currently have cameras that we don't own, that we are able to look at at will?
So, yes, currently, uh, we, we do have limited capabilities of viewing, for instance, ETHS cameras, you know, you know, for public safety. So, uh, we can go in and have limited availability to, uh, those cameras at ETHS, primarily the exterior cameras for us to watch what's going on around the school. Uh, and I, I like to, uh, really focus on that, or even Northwestern. If this was, uh, you know, hypothetically, a critical incident at the school, and we had that partnership or that agreement with ETHS, our analysts and our, uh, intel personnel could, you know, utilize, uh, those cameras in FUSIS if agreed upon and within a policy with, uh, the correct sharing agreements in place. We could theoretically use that, you know, as a private entity's cameras in FUSIS. Same thing with cameras for Northwestern for Game Day. We could theoretically, if allowed, you know, be able to pull those cameras into FUSIS as well. Uh, and to even expound if someone had, if I, you know, your privately-owned, you know, outdoor camera, it's a possibility, you know, to pull that in as well, but it's not our intentions at all at the police department to use this to now, uh, grab a hold of private citizens' cameras. It's just for the cameras that we have, that we already maintain through the city, as well as our body worn fleet cameras, drone cameras for operational purposes.
So theoretically, my Ring doorbell camera, I could sign up and have that be, FUSIS could use that?
Theoretically, yes.
That's not the intention of the, of the EPD. Do we have any policies or ordinances that address this? And I guess this is a question for Corporation Council or, or Deputy Chief.
So currently, we don't have any policies or ordinances that govern it. Uh, we don't have FUSIS yet. Uh, there was...
And none of this we can do currently because we don't have FUSIS?
No, uh, no, so the, we don't, we don't have FUSIS, so we can't, no, bring all of these cameras into one single pane. I mean, we can do a limited amount, just what we have, like in Milestone, like you might be able to put a camera on this screen, camera on this screen, camera on that, but it's not the expanded capabilities like, you know, 20-plus cameras in one, uh, uh, on one screen.
Yeah, okay. And is there facial recognition? Do we currently have any facial recognition?
Absolutely not.
As part of Axon? And is there any facial recognition that would be involved in this proposed contract?
No, none whatsoever. We currently do not have...
Not on body worn cameras, not on the mobile cameras?
No, sir. We currently do not have any facial recognition on any of the cameras that we own and operate, and it's not a part of this agreement.
Okay. Thank you. That's all for now.
Councilmember Hedakakis-Kelly Burns.
Deputy Chief Wright, um, we had a, thank you for answering my questions this afternoon. Uh, one thing I think that's really important for the public to know is, um, what folks at the police department actually have the authorization to share this data? And if you can just kind of explain that to folks so they kind of know, um, that it's not a big chunk of people, it's very locked down, so if you could just explain that.
You said what chunk of?
Of, of staff. Can you just talk through, like, which staff actually have the authorization to?
To share?
Yeah.
So the, in Axon right now, obviously, the chief of police is the head administrator. Uh, I'm currently an administrator for Axon, uh, and Brian Bart's IT, uh, is currently an administrator. Right now, we are the only three. If someone, uh, if there is a request, let's just say, most of our sharing, uh, through Axon right now is either with the state's attorney's office or with another police agency, uh, for investigative purposes. If there was a request to share, uh, evidence or video in Axon right now, that request would come to the three of us. Uh, even when they come to, uh, Mr. Bart's in IT, he always forwards those requests to me for approval. So, uh, short answer is, right now, myself and the chief are the only, uh, individuals, uh, in the system that are approving sharing agreements.
Great, thank you. Um, I'm curious, there, there are folks from Axon here?
Yes, we have, uh, some representatives from Axon joining us tonight.
Um, so I, I know a big, so for me personally, th- this is like, when I, when I think of the body cameras, this is like a really important tool that I think we all agree we need, um, an accountability tool. Um, we've had, we've been, um, snake bit before with the, you know, our choices about, um, surveillance cameras. Um, and so, um, when we talk about the FUSIS part, uh, for me, that kind of, you know, tends to go towards, this is a surveillance tool, um, which, you know, as new AI tools and all this, you know, are emerging, um, for me personally, I have a lot of questions about the way that technology is being used. Um, I see how it could be very helpful for you all to, especially in like crisis, um, when you're in crisis mode, finding things. Um, is, is the FUSIS part something that could be removed from the contract? Cause I, I know we have, we've been negotiating this. Is this something that we can remove and move forward without?
Well, yes, technically, anything in the contract can be removed. Uh, when you start removing, uh, certain items from, uh, the contract itself, uh, it, it could potentially like increase the prices and affect the bundling discount, but that is something that can be removed from the contract, yes.
Yep. And I think this, if, I don't know if you know this, um, Deputy Chief, or maybe the Axon folks can answer it. I know we have this big discount, um, as like an IT guy myself. I know a lot of times, companies, when they have their year-end, um, financial close, that's when you get the biggest discounts because they're wanting their, you know, to show like, we hit our sales goals. Is this, um, this negotiated discount, is this, maybe Axon can answer, is this completely tied to year-end sales numbers?
based on my experience, uh, we've been working on this contract, uh, for just about a year. Uh, definitely going into the beginning of this year, uh, and the discounts that were proposed even early on in the contract were, uh, competitive and comparable to the discount that's being offered now. with my direct involvement, I would say, uh, absolutely not. I think the discount is the discount based on the bundling of a service and us being a customer for 15 years. Uh, we negotiated a renewal back in 2022, uh, that, uh, pretty much carried the same discount. That discount was, I believe, brought to council maybe like early fall. Uh, so it wasn't an end of the year. Uh, it wasn't an end of the year council agenda or end of the year contract. We have to get this wrapped up to meet end of the year goals. This is something that we have been working on all year. And quite honestly, uh, if presented, you know, three or four months ago, I think the deep discount that was given with this contract, you know, would have been the same.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Kelly Burns.
Great, thank you very much. Um, you know, I'm, I am concerned about the dramatic increase in price, though I hear you, um, Councilmember Hedakakis, that this is the nature of technology these days. Uh, in the spreadsheets that we got in Finance and Budget, which I don't know if we ended up uploading those to the council packet, but, you know, it has the line items. I would like to know which are these, um, just increased prices on what we already have and what are new products? So that's not really identified in order to be able to sort of value engineer, um, this contract, which is, goes up to almost a million dollars by, you know, from 550 by the end. So that would be great to see. I'd also very much like to see, um, I know when I look like at Aurora, which was, has almost three times our police force, um, their price per head for what looks like a very similar package compared to the items here is, um, more than half, um, half the price. So I wonder if we could get, um, some comparables with cities that have similar packages, and I realize that it depends on the date when the, when the contract is cut, that all that can change, but I would really like to see that. I don't want to feel rushed for a six-year contract, which is a very long contract. Um, and, you know, I, I feel like we need to do a little more due diligence in terms of cost for our residents. I understand, thank you for the presentation, that this would be very useful to our, um, police department. However, it, it is a big commitment. Um, so I would like to see some comparables with other cities with similar packages. I'd also like to see, um, you know, the most controversial part is the, um, FUSIS component or FUSIS component. And I think, you know, one thing that's really important to keep in mind is, when you, normally aggregating a lot of information together and centralizing it is a good thing, right? It's like for health or anything else, but in this case, it really makes it that much more vulnerable to have so much information, like I say, aggregate it all into one, and that, that really is the issue. It's vulnerable, and I think a lot of us, you know, right now with the current administration, um, certain disregard for law and an increased authoritarianism, I think that's just, I know, I believe in Nashville recently, the city council voted not to, not to, um, contract with the FUSIS component, which is very similar to Flock. I know that Flock were, you know, sort of bad actors, but this is, I think Axon just, this just goes back a couple of years, right? This is pretty new for Axon, the, uh, FUSIS component, I believe, to 24, I believe.
So prior to, um, speaking off just general knowledge, prior to obtaining FUSIS, uh, Axon was partners with FUSIS as a standalone organization for years prior to acquiring them. Uh, I do want to say that this technology, uh, FUSIS itself is, is not anything at all like Flock. It's not, uh, an ALPR, uh, camera recognition system. Uh, the information that's being pulled into FUSIS for, uh, observations or for us to digest and use is from cameras that we already own. So it's not pulling in information from anywhere else. We already have access to the cameras, to the footage that's coming in here. It's already being stored in evidence.com through our body worn cameras and our fleet cameras. Same thing with the Milestone cameras, that information we already have. FUSIS is not now storing it as, like, in a separate, uh, area of the system. It's just being stored on our system and it's being pulled in. So by adding FUSIS, we aren't, um, we aren't necessarily creating any more data retention or storage that we already have, data retention that we already have. We already have this, we are, we're already storing body worn camera footage, we're already recording it, it's already been stored. Same thing with our city cameras, it's already being recorded and it's already being stored.
Right, thank you, thank you very much. So, I mean, we are already compliant with body cameras, so, um, I guess, eh, what I need to see is, I'm not, you know, we are in a moment of affordability issues too, so this is a big increase. Um, what do we really need that much more? And, um, again, I would like to see these itemized, these, these, um, costs itemized in terms of what's new and what's being improved. I noticed that every year in January, it has two, it lists two drones. Is that, um, a replacement of drones, or is that an upgrade? Or what does that mean? Every, on, um, it says drone, it lists two every, at the beginning of each year from 26 through 32.
Are you reading from the contract?
I'm reading from the, yeah, from the, uh...
So if, without looking at the contract, from year to year, there are certain deliverables. So, uh, as I mentioned in the presentation, uh, there are refreshes to the hardware. If you look at how the contract is laid out, uh, there's a line item for an officer's safety, I believe, uh, Skydio drone kit, and that contains three drones and three docks, and then there's a separate line for a fourth drone. If you look fast forward, let's say, from 2026 to 2032 or 31, there is another item because that's when that item is being refreshed and re-delivered as part of the same contract.
So, so how many, so are we increasing our drones?
Right now, uh, the police department has one drone. We do have, uh, uh, access to, uh, we have a joint training program with the fire department, but we have one drone, we will be placing that one drone with the, uh, four smaller drones supplied by Axon.
So that is still part of the search and rescue agreement with the fire department? I'm unclear, so we're adding? Cause I know, right, we have...
We're adding.
An SAR range.
We're, we, we would like to sunset or get rid of the one that we have because it's not always operational, and we're adding four.
And is that the one that we have in partnership with the fire, EFD?
No, so that drone that we have, the Matrix, that was outlined in the presentation, that's a drone that we bought through Axon in our previous contracts, so technically, the police department procured that drone, but fire department, if they needed it, uh, would have access to it, and they have trained on it during our joint training program.
So we'd be, um, so rather than, so we will be getting more drones, but they'll be different ones, is what I'm understanding.
Correct.
And what can't this drone, I mean, why are we having such, I mean, I'm just concerned about all these upgrades, that we really need them. Um, and I understand that they're better, I'm not arguing with that, but I am concerned. I'm concerned that we're increasing our drones, that we're upgrading. Um, I'm, you know, I do have some issues when I, with the cost and, and also with, um, you know, seeing that some other communities are actually, you know, turning this down at this point, given, given the environment that we're in. Um, I just think there's so much we still don't know. I mean, I, I'd also like to see a little bit more of a, you know, comparison with, with Flock, um, you know, all the details, how it mirrors and how it doesn't mirror the Flock in, in a little more greater detail. and again, I, I would like to see those cost comparables with other cities. Uh, and, um, anyway, I think we just need to do a little more due diligence. I guess I also have a concern overall with changing technology, um, and with greater data collection and data sharing, that we up here are deliberating over this as a council. Um, it's important we do, but I wonder if we couldn't have, if there isn't another body, whether it's a third party or whether it's a committee, that's, um, with technology experts to vet this and have those discussions, um, in greater depth before it would come to council. I would feel a little bit better if there, if we had something like that. Thank you.
Councilmember Burns.
Um, I think I'm actually going to hold to hear your thoughts, if you plan to make any.
Sure, um, and thank you for this, um, super helpful presentation, um, and, um, I think very much where most, many of the comments up here have been, I think the great majority of what we're talking about is not just fine, but important to do. Um, I, I really am trying to understand the FUSIS, um, uh, tool, and fundamentally, I have two questions. One is, why do we need it? And the other one is, what damage can the federal government potentially do with it? Uh, I understand, and... I understand, and I want to be very clear, my prior in all of this is that you guys are honorable and trustworthy and great at your jobs. So when you talk about the police department policy and intent and practice, I have complete confidence in that. But we're, what I see is that we're building a tool here that I don't fully understand its capabilities, and I'm imagining what happens when a grand jury subpoena comes in from the federal government or a warrant signed by a judge that then presumably could be utilized to direct us to hand over information or deductions pursuant to this new powerful surveillance technology. That, that strikes me as very worrying. So I guess those are my two questions. One, why is this beneficial slash necessary? And two, what is the worst case scenario in terms of how it could be misused? And I want to be really, really clear with that second question, that we unfortunately don't have the luxury of acting as though insane things won't happen or like, woo, dystopian sci-fi fantasies won't come true, because we all watched it. We all watched it. So what do you have, what thoughts do you have about those two questions?
So the first question is, why is it necessary? It's, it's, my opinion is necessary, and it's been necessary for a while. Especially considering when you look at the news and you see these mass casualty events, and you are now on a hunt, you know, for a suspect at large. With this technology, you can, you can observe, you can, you, you can view multiple camera feeds at one time on one single screen with the help of the technology overlay to detect the bad guy. Or if you are, you know, have some type of operational event, you know, that requires you to have the need for multiple cameras at one time, you know. There, there's no way possible to have one or two people sitting behind a computer screen looking for or observing to prevent things from happening in a room. It's, it's just not possible to view cameras, you know, from, you know, one at a time to prevent or to catch someone in a critical incident. It's almost like, you know, the, the technology is, the technology is there to support police departments in, in fighting crime and catching bad guys and to put ourselves in a position where we have the ability to use it and to have it as an organization, because you never know when something is going to happen. And to not acquire it for public safety purposes, I think it's, I think it's irresponsible. We've seen and we, we can say or sit back and say, well, this is Evanston. Highland Park was Highland Park, no one thought it was going to happen there. And if they had these tools like this in place, you know, maybe you aren't searching for a bad guy throughout the day. You know, luckily, they captured him, but, you know, sometimes you don't. To have this technology in place for us to use, I think is crucial. We see things like this happening across the US every day. It's happening even when we don't see it, you know. So in my opinion, it's a small price to pay for a technology that could aid us in providing safety and security for this community.
And on, on the second point, you kind of framed up my second question. The problem is that there are people who are trying to catch a good guy. And they run, the, the problem is that we've got a federal administration that has demonstrated a willingness to try to catch a good guy, not a bad guy. And so what tools does this technology potentially allows them to misuse in their effort to catch a good guy?
So let's, just want to step back and just make sure we fully understand this. The information that goes into FUSES is information that we already have. So FUSES is not storing body worn camera footage, it's pulling it in through the system for us to view it. We're still storing this. So whether we have FUSES or not, the evidence is the evidence. The body worn camera footage is the body worn camera footage. It's still going to be stored on our server. We're not, we're not adding additional body worn camera footage or additional means for someone to obtain evidence that we have by adding FUSES. We have it, we own it, we've collected it, it's recorded, we stored it, it's there.
I think Chief Pollock had some points to make too.
Good evening, council. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Clerk Mendoza, City Manager and Council. I think, if I can put this right, I work in EOCs quite often with the NU football games, and we do this quite often. And I think what Deputy Chief Wright is trying to explain is, what FUSES does is, in an EOC, there's, there's a huge wall of cameras, and you can break those cameras down to one big video or you can break it down to several videos, but there's one person who works there that has to pick every single camera. So I think what Deputy Chief Wright is trying to tell you is, what this FUSES does, it takes your body camera, it takes whatever cameras that you have, and it pulls it all in one screen. So as we're there managing a situation, it just pulls the same data that we have. It's not facial recognition, it's not anything different other than the data that you're already seeing without one person trying to go from camera to camera to camera. It pulls it all up on a screen so we can see it. When we're in an EOC, when you're working a football game or any type of EOC that has this technology, there's a person that they hire there who is, if the incident commander says, hey, can you get, get me the camera two? And then they're, they're scrambling through a list of cameras this long to get the camera two, zoom it in, pull it up on the screen so you could see what's going on in, wherever that would be. What this is, it pulls it all in together so you could, you could see it all at one time. And I think that's what you're trying to say, right? So it's nothing different than, it's, it's no different technology, it's no facial, it's no anything other than bringing it all in one place so incident commanders and people working in the EOC could see what's going on at one time. That's, just trying to help you out.
Councilmember Burns.
Unless you want to speak more to my second question.
I'm sorry.
Unless you want to answer, speak more to the second question. But it sounds like that's sort of the answer, is that right?
I'm sorry, can you repeat the second question again?
The second question, which is the core of my concern here, is what tools does this give the federal government to surveil and endanger our residents? Should they, as they definitely can, use the judicial tools available to them to reach into these systems and get whatever's there?
So there is no additional information that the federal government will get by us having FUSES that they won't get from us having just regular body worn cameras and evidence storage. There's no additional, we're not creating any additional evidence for the federal government to obtain. The information that's being pulled in, it's a feed that's coming into a screen. The actual data is still being recorded and stored and uploaded to a cloud on a body worn camera, just like the cameras that are in this building. If we brought FUSES, took these cameras and we pulled them into FUSES, that's a feed into the system so we can see it. The data that's being recorded on these cameras is still being stored and served, I mean, it's still being stored on servers maintained by IT, I believe, on servers that we have in the city. So we aren't creating any additional way for the federal government to obtain information that they can't already get from just subpoenaing body worn camera or subpoenaing stored video footage, you know, to the city that we have on our server.
Councilmember Burns.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, I think you've been crystal clear. I think people are looking for something that they're not, that they may not be getting, and so we're getting some repeat questions, in my opinion, but I think you've been crystal clear. So, so one thing I think was, was mentioned today that I just want to make sure is clear is that this is something that we're, this is not discretionary, just the cameras itself, we have to do this. This is something that the state requires. It was said by Councilmember Newsma, but then the way it's been described by, by others and probably inadvertently, it, it could make someone think that this is something discretionary. We are required to, our officers are required to wear these, and this is a good thing. This is something that activists from around the country, around our state fought for. I was a part of those protests that fought for these things. And, and I know it's something that is really important to that community, I think, to the city, to our police officers, and, and, and to the many people, I was interim deputy city clerk for a while, who also like rely on this information so that they can represent themselves and complaints that they have. Like, we get a lot of requests for, for this footage, and it is incredibly empowering, empowering and useful to people that feel like they have been abused by the city in some manner. So I just wanted to kind of lay that out there first and foremost. I, I don't know if the information that the Finance and Budget Committee received is in our packet, is it? In terms of like the contract and, I didn't see the contract in here, I want to make sure I'm not missing anything. And then also, e- even just the discussion that happened at Finance and Budget, because one of my questions also is that why not RFP this? And it sounds like, I think Councilmember Newsma mentioned that discussion happened at Finance, but I don't see that, I don't see that discussion reflected in the, in the memo. Am I right about that?
Thank you, Councilmember Burns, for the question. I think I wanted to address your RFP question. We, we've been, we've been using Axon for about 15 years, but in 2016, when we were exploring the use of body cameras for our officers, we were one of the first municipalities in the state to adopt it. We leveraged a City of Tucson RFP. They had done an extensive RFP in 2015 or 2014 or something like that. So in 2016, we were able to do a pilot, and we were satisfied with the pilot. And then we were able to leverage a piggyback on that RFP, which is something that we do from time to time. And that was very competitive pricing at the time. So we've been with Axon for body cameras since that time.
So you said the last time we leveraged a, a different RFP, that was in, did you say 2022 or when was that?
2016, I believe, was the year that we leveraged the City of Tucson, 2016 or 17 was when we leveraged the City of Tucson RFP.
And, but we haven't since then?
Correct, and we've done, we've spent several months reviewing RFPs and cooperative purchasing agreements. I think this is under a cooperative purchasing agreement. So we, and to your point, Councilmember Kelly, about City of Aurora, we looked at a bunch of other comparable communities to ensure that we were not an outlier on the pricing and leveraging cooperative purchasing agreements.
And so just, just so we can have kind of a clean response, can you just tell me why you feel like this is the best cost for us? Like, what do we, what are the, the things that we did to make sure that we feel, that we feel like we have the best price here?
Yeah, so we're leveraging a cooperative purchasing agreement. We researched many other communities to see what they are paying for comparable programs to ensure that we weren't an outlier. We did look at other vendors as well as pricing, and we felt like, could you, because I think Councilmember Newsma asked us at Finance and Budget last month, you know, could you theoretically use Axon for tasers and Genetek for in-car cameras and Motorola for body cams and somebody else for interview, right? Theoretically, you could string together something, and maybe the pricing would be a little bit less expensive. But frankly, then you would have all kinds of integration problems. And I think Councilmember Rogers spoke to the importance of integration at the Finance and Budget Committee meeting last month. And we would have to hire additional staff because you would be basically operating in silos, and that is really problematic. I did also want to just address, just to reiterate, the importance of the, to the mayor's point, if I understand, the way that I understand the technology is, we would not be increasing our exposure from a federal government overreach standpoint with this product. What this product does enable us to do, the FUSES product in particular, is if, God forbid, there's a critical incident in front of the high school and you have street cameras and milestone, you have officers responding with body cameras, you have vehicles responding with in-car cameras, the whole point is to be able to manage that critical incident in real time and be able to respond in real time, which could literally be a life and death issue.
I, I just want to make sure, so in this, this is for the Finance and Budget Committee, but really any advisory committee, any committee that eventually leads to us, which is all of them really. Please make sure that the memo reflects not only the discussion but all the information that was presented at those committees, because everything that you just went over, as far as I can tell, is not in the memo. And not only that, I think it's really useful for us to have that information, but I think it's useful for the public to have that information, especially because I've received quite a bit of outreach over the last, really the day, yesterday and today about this. And I think if they, I think if the memo had some of this information in it, that there would, there would have been less concerns. Also want to say, I, I want to make sure some comments I made before weren't, weren't, weren't misunderstood. I appreciate Chief Pollock for coming up and doing what he did. I just wanted to be clear. He put an emphasis, I think, on what was to me already clear from our commander. So I feel comfortable with this. I had several people reach out, I'm also willing to hold this. I, I think it's important that we save the city the hundreds of thousands of dollars. You know, my understanding from reading the memo is that if we don't adopt it this year, that it can go up hundreds of thousands of dollars. I think we should make sure that doesn't happen. It will require a special meeting. I'm happy to do that. If there's enough concern up here, I do think it's something, if we're going to do it, we should adopt it this year. But I think there's certainly enough questions that I'm getting from community members that I would like time to answer before approving this. But if there's not enough support to do that, then, then so be it. Thank you.
At this time, no one is requesting to speak for a first time. We go back to Councilmember Hadda-Cardis with 2:40 left.
Thank you. I have an IT question. So, and maybe City Manager Stowe might know this. So, you know, the FUSES, I totally get the appeal of single pane of glass for management of all these camera feeds. Do, when we license that, are we running that FUSES software like in an appliance in our data center environment? Are we connecting to a service that connects into our cameras? Can someone just kind of explain the infrastructure? And then I know that all that video evidence and all those videos, we own, and we always, no matter what, even though there's an interface, I'm curious if there's any, if FUSES, if there's any talking back to Axon, because, you know, data, data is valuable. So even aggregated data that's just metadata, people want their AI products to use, to be used as much as possible. So I'm curious if there's any talking back to Axon and if anyone can kind of answer that.
If Deputy Chief Wright agrees, I think this might be an opportunity for someone from Axon to come up, be able to speak to the technical aspects of FUSES in particular.
I agree.
Good evening, I'm Tim Kressler for Axon, happy to address your questions, council member. So the Axon system includes what we call cores, which are essentially lightweight servers that get deployed. They receive the video inputs from your camera system or from your cameras directly, excuse me, technically. Then they are transmitting that data to the FUSES interface when the data is requested. So you, the chief or whoever says, I would like to see these five cameras, the cores send the video up to the web service, and the web service displays that in your real-time crime center or wherever it might be. The cores don't store any data persistently, so that data is only there while we are interacting with it. If you want to store the data from an incident in particular, then that data gets shipped to. If you want to store the data from an incident in particular, then that data gets shipped to evidence.com through a direct connection from Fusis to evidence.com, and that is where it is stored. And then it is held based on the city's policies, so the policies that you guys set that says, after 90 days, it has to be deleted, or whatever it might be, depending on the incident, that, that is how long it would be.
Okay, and then, so it, it sounds like it's, it's a small, like appliance that we own or lease? And the software, and so like, where I'm kind of curious is the AI overlay, that's, is that something that's constantly upgrading, updating, or is that something that like, when you have software, like patching, like, obviously there's patching.
We train the AI on our data, we don't use any of our customers' data for training. The AI, like functionality of the device is updated when it gets refreshed on a regular basis, on a monthly patching or, you know, bi-monthly patching system, whatever that, you know, whatever the frequency.
So it's, it's an appliance, we get the software updates from Axon itself, it gets updated. You all are doing all the AI overlay work.
We, we train the AI and then we deploy the AI to your devices. And so your devices are the ones that are technically running the AI at the edge, we don't run the AI inside of the.
Okay, and then you're not getting metadata from our videos?
Yeah, all the data that is Evanston's data remains in Evanston's implementation. The only data that you share is what the police chief or what the, what the agency decides to share with sister agencies like, you know, Highland or, you know, City of Chicago or something like that. That would be a direct share that you would institute and that they would institute backwards bidirectionally. It doesn't happen unless you decide to do it. And just like with evidence.com, we share no data outside of that system. Anything that we get requested to provide is, is just forwarded to you, we are only a steward of your data, we do not own any of, any of that data. The data is all Evanston's.
Right, and I'll just, also, I was happy to see that your terms of end use in your contract was much more straightforward than others I've seen, so thanks for explaining this.
Yeah, we, we are very committed to the privacy of the citizens of Evanston and to the Evanston's agency in general. We do not allow any network access to the data unless you expressly decide to do it. Which, I mean, many cities do, right? Aurora, I mean, Oakbrook is a customer, shares data with Aurora, you know, like back and forth, that happens on a frequent basis in Chicagoland. But it is completely at your discretion, it is not something that we do or would ever set up on our, on your behalf.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, absolutely, thank you.
At this time, no one is requesting to speak for a first time, we go back to Councilmember Kelly, use your full five minutes, if you could be relatively quick, please.
Okay, I just, I wanted to just make a point about the horrific Highland Park tragedy. Of course, everybody wants to do everything we can to prevent anything like that. So with reference to that, I can see how this, the, you know, the, the centralized system, the Fusis system might help afterwards. But I don't, I have a hard time saying how that would prevent it unless we're talking about predictive policing. If we're talking about predictive policing, then that really does deserve a more thorough discussion where we're identifying people who might commit a crime or locations where a crime might be committed. So, you know, when you mentioned Highland Park, we mentioned in terms of being able, I could understand how afterwards we'd have better capabilities in terms of apprehending the person, but in terms of preventing that. So.
So, if, if I can use an example, a couple of months back, we had the No Kings Rally at Fountain Square. During that time, we had all of the cameras at Fountain Square, they just happened to be down that day. So we now have to deploy personnel on-site, you know, in various locations. Because there are concerns from people who attend these events, you know, who are worried about, you know, bad actors and things like that. Having this, you know, technology allows us to not, you know, do any type of predicting, predictive policing, but have operational awareness on a single site with multiple views at one time. So it's not about predicting bad behavior, but about being aware and having a visual of what's going on onsite at a location where that could potentially be harm or a crime committed.
Thank you, so I guess I would like to move to, I understand, and again, I really appreciate your presentation and I understand how this would be overall a big upgrade for the police department. I just feel, to do due diligence on behalf of our residents, I would like to see this held for various reasons. I would like to see, so I don't like, understand why, if there could be line by line, first of all, I think, Councilmember Burns' point, that I think everybody in the council should get the contract that we, was provided to us in Finance and Budget to see the long list of items like the drones. I would like to know, in each case, like what's not working here, why we need to go from this drone to this upgrade or to this many? With, and understand really why, each item, why we're moving to upgrade and for this increased cost? And what's not working, why this would be better, and it's just not clear from looking at the contract. You know, our drones are working fine now and we already are compliant, nobody's arguing against body cameras, I don't think, up here, we have body cameras. So it's not clear at all to me, what we have now, I mean, the example you just gave there, that was maybe the first, but in terms of the long list of items, and then I'd also like to see that again with some comparable communities, I'm glad we did look at some, but see those again. I looked, saw Aurora that looks similar to this contract with a considerably less per officer cost. And, and the three to six years, one more question, then I'll stop. The three to six years opt-out, is that, that's at no charge, it's just, it's an opt-out, okay. So I think that's it, and then I guess I'd like to see more parallel side-by-side versus the flock. I understand that's very different, but have a comparison of that. Because it's hard to, to make a decision just without understanding, we need this because this doesn't work and it's a long list of items. So I would like to move to hold this, and again, especially so that all of council and the public has access to the, to the packet.
Councilmember Kelly moves to hold this item, is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Burns, seconds. I think this is a non-debatable motion, but I think Council, Luke had a comment he wanted to make.
Just a quick comment, Mayor, thank you, I just wanted to mention that there were a number of questions that came in over the weekend or this morning in regards to this item. We did answer, to my knowledge, all of the questions and put that in the EPW document that was shared just before two o'clock today. So I just wanted to clarify that, to our knowledge, virtually all questions have been answered. And if there are still remaining outstanding questions, that'd be helpful for us to note tonight.
Councilmember Saffron.
Yeah. Can we just have a understanding of the potential financial ramifications of a hold?
Do you understand any of the finance ramifications you said?
If we don't approve this tonight, it would, we would need to have a special meeting to come back and prove this before the end of the year. What exactly, I mean, I understand the motivation for the hold is to get more information, but I want to make sure that everybody up here understands the financial costs of delaying this and any potential ways to get around that. By scheduling a special meeting or making sure that we don't cost ourselves money to get information that the city manager says has already been provided, but I also support my colleagues' desire to get more information.
So, as of today, the cost of waiting is, is there on the screen. So the contract would need to be signed, the proposed quote by December 12th. I know just experience with Axon and, you know, negotiating the last contract. What's up there is probably as close to accurate as possible. There is an expected or an anticipated 8% increase, which will take effect with next year's pricing. That 8% will be approximately $470,000 over the life of the contract, so about $67,000 per month.
Okay, so, I guess a question for the members who want the hold.
I'm sorry, $67,000 per year.
Can, can you
The abro.
Commit to finding out what you feel you need to find out by December 11th? And we could have, or, you told me, Mr. Mayor, you're the one who gets to call the special meetings. I mean, I, I'm not trying to add pressure, but there's a, there is a financial cost to this and I want us all to be aware of it.
I mean, just to remind you, I, or three councilmembers can call a special meeting. And then also, to be a little pedantic here, this is not an ordinance. So even if the special meeting is kind of late in a time that not everyone can make it, as long as there's a quorum who can make it, the majority of that people, collection of people here would be enough to pass it. So those are the rules.
Override, I mean, I understand the underlying desire to get further information, I want to be supportive of that, but I don't want to cost us $67,000 a year unless there's $470,000 worth of information that you feel that you will get between now and the 12th.
So if I, you know, I'm hopeful that we can reduce the cost, that we would reduce, that we don't necessarily, maybe we'll find that we don't in fact need to, to adopt every single item in here, I think the council hasn't been able to see everything here and that we can do more thorough vetting. And I, like I say, I understand and appreciate the department's desire to have this very large package, but I'm hopeful that there can be more in-depth invest, looking, not by me necessarily, but you know, I'd like, that's what I say.
Or Councilmember Kelly, just as a matter of process, why don't I make a motion to override the hold? And then we can debate that, correct? And then we can have this discussion in full, let's do that, I move that we override the hold.
I'll second.
Councilmember Saffron moves to overturn the hold, Councilmember Rogers, seconds. We are now, you've made an honest council out of us, excellent. Councilmember Hadekakis.
So I, working in the IT space, I was not super surprised that the cost went up as much as it did just based on video storage being just an escalating thing. You have new cameras, higher resolution. So I was surprised it wasn't more, because from my dealings with things, it's, it kind of explodes in cost. I'm, my biggest, like, holdup with the, the information part was the Fusis and how it talks. I, I have the feeling, like, I feel much better about it, I'm still trying to work things through, but I, I mean, I think it's $67,000 a year, I think this is something we have to be solid on. It's, it is, over the course of time, a lot of money, but I don't think we should rush necessarily.
Councilmember Rogers.
I would just add that if there are specific questions people want, that those questions need to be written and submitted ASAP. If we're looking at a December 12th, I think was the date that was mentioned, which if, I have a calendar in front of me, but that's got to be what, like Friday, Thursday, Friday? Yeah, so, you know, so there, there are specific pieces of information people want, that needs to be presented tomorrow. Really, for us to be able to evaluate any information that's given to us as additional information.
Councilmember Kelly.
So I wonder if the gentleman here from Axon could respond to, to let us, so I would like, for example, to understand what we have now and why we're upgrading or where we're upgrading the cost to be able to better understand this new package. Would you allow council to revisit this without and postpone, you know, not for two weeks? I mean, is there any issue with that? Or, I'm sorry, January 8th, for, till January 8th? I mean, without having, have the option to bring this back without being under the, you know, concern of having the price get checked up?
Point of affirmation, I think would be the, the 12th of January.
I'm sorry, the 12th of January, so that we can better vet this and understand it.
Good evening, Council David Arth with Axon. The date that we have for the contract, I just want to call out, this has actually, you know, partly reduced in cost since we initially launched it in January with the program. That's really, I think, in principle, why there's a hard deadline for, for this calendar year. If the ask is to say, hey, can we have another week to debate? We can certainly be accommodating with extending the expiration date, but December is going to be a firm hold in terms of the pricing. Largely in fairness to a lot of other agencies that have worked within this timeline. And then, I think, with the context that pricing has evolved actually to favor the Evanston proposal here. So we'd be happy to extend, you know, past the 12th, but in terms of moving into the next calendar year, that wouldn't be feasible at the current cost.
Thank you.
Sure.
The motion before the council is to overturn the hold, will the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Rogers?
Aye.
Councilmember Hadekakis?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly? Councilmember Harris? Councilmember Isles?
Aye.
Councilmember Newsma? Councilmember Burns?
No.
Councilmember Saffron?
Aye.
With seven voting in favor and two voting against, the motion carries and the hold is overturned. Seeing no further discussion, will the clerk please take the roll on the underlying motion to approve the contract?
Councilmember Davis? Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Rogers?
Aye.
Councilmember Hadekakis?
No.
Councilmember Kelly? Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Isles?
Aye.
Councilmember Newsma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
No.
Councilmember Saffron?
Aye.
With six voting in favor and three voting against, the motion carries and the contract is approved. Now on item 823, Councilmember Kelly, do you have a motion?
I'd like to move the reconsideration of the approval of change order number five to the agreement of the Smith Group Incorporated for the Evanston Shoreline repairs.
Second.
Okay, so pursuant, no, wait, so, hold on, okay. If I understand this correctly, and I kind of hope I don't, the recommendation from council is that Rule 22.1 be suspended so that reconsideration is in order. So I think that would be the first motion. So I think that's not what you said, right?
Right, I'm sorry, so I'd like to.
So, Councilmember Kelly withdraws her previous motion and is about to make a new, exciting motion.
To move to.
New procedural ground being, being, being trod here in Evanston, go ahead.
So I'm moving to suspend the rules in order to do what I just read, so.
Is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Kelly moves to suspend Rule 22.1 so that there may be a reconsideration of the, of change order that was approved at the previous council meeting, not withstanding the fact that the, without said suspension, that would not be in order, Councilmember Harris, seconds. Would the clerk please take the role on the motion to, to suspend Rule 22.1 to permit potential reconsideration?
Councilmember Davis?
Submit to what?
To suspend the.
Okay, so, so.
Aye.
Councilmember Rogers?
Aye.
Councilmember Hadekakis?
No.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
No.
Councilmember Isles?
Aye.
Councilmember Newsma? Councilmember Burns? Councilmember Saffron?
Well, the procedural thicket I feared has, we have been spared the procedural thicket I feared because with six voting in favor and three voting against, two-thirds of councilmembers have voted to suspend, oh wait, never mind. Anyhow, two-thirds have voted to suspend the rule, so the Rule 22.1 is suspended. So now, Councilmember Kelly, your motion.
So now I'd like to move to reconsider the approval of change order number five.
I'll second.
Councilmember Kelly moves to reconsider the vote that occurred two weeks ago approving change order number five to the agreement referenced in item 823. Councilmember Rogers, seconds. Will the clerk please take the role on the motion to reconsider?
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Rogers?
Aye.
Councilmember Hadekakis?
No.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris? Councilmember Isles?
Aye.
Councilmember Newsma?
No.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Sufferden?
All right. That was the procedural thicket I worried about. We avoided that procedural thicket, too, because with six voting in favor and three voting against, two-thirds voted in favor of reconsideration, which is the maximum required under any circumstances. Rule 22.1 is a little vague about whether we needed two-thirds or, or a majority. So we have both, so there's no ambiguity. Therefore, the motion carries. Therefore, the reconsideration is accepted. Therefore, the approval is unpassed. Councilmember Kelly, do you have further motions relative to item 823?
So now I'd like to move to deny, to deny. Do I have to do that first? So, so we're reconsidering, right? So I guess I would move, do I just move the item again?
So, so what, what you, what you just did was effectuated a time machine. So we are now at the meeting two weeks ago, right before a motion was made on, on this item.
Right, okay.
And just imagine yourself to be in that circumstance.
Okay. So we're going to move this item again, and I'm hoping that we will vote it down so that we can move forward. Okay. I would like to then move the approval of the change order number five.
And I'll second.
Councilmember Kelly moves to approve change order number five, referenced in item 823. Councilmember Rogers seconds. Councilmember Newsma.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, as I understand what Councilmember Kelly wants to do is not approve this change order, which would be $38,900, to go to Smith Group for the design, you know, the, the detailed design of the concept that we discussed back on November 10th. And that concept, the direction we gave to staff, was the GEI Concept 1B, but a permanent version of it. GEI Concept 1B was a diagonal kind of Mobi Mat, but we said we liked that layout, but make it permanent. The price range affixed to Concept 1B was $130,000 to $180,000. That was for the Mobi Mat version. So we don't officially know, we haven't officially been told a ballpark price range for making that diagonal layout out of concrete. But as a very relevant point of reference, we have GEI Recommendation 1A, which was a permanent configuration of, a different configuration, but permanently constructed out of concrete. The price range on that one was $325,000 to $375,000. So common sense says a permanent version of Concept 1B would be $275,000 to $325,000 or somewhere in that ballpark. To construct, it, I'll direct my question to Deputy City Engineer Chris Seuss. Is that, are you tracking with me? Am I, am I, am I talking silly or am I on the right track here?
Sure. Good evening, members of the City Council. My name is Chris Seuss, Assistant City Engineer. With regards to the cost estimate, so that was a rendering that was provided. It was in no means a full design. They didn't provide typical sections to show where their costs came from. And staff at the time did express that we felt that was an undershot of what it may be feasible to construct. With regards to item 1B, the recommendation from City Council after the presentation on November 10th, when we came back for award, was that we would, you guys would want us to award a contract with this design firm, basically to construct option 1B in a permanent manner, which would be concrete.
Wait, to, to make a design?
Yeah, to make a design, to move forward with a option 1B in a manner that's permanent and, and concrete. In addition to, I believe at the end of the discussion, was to include the dogwash area.
Right. But that price, the $38,900 was just to come up with the drawings, which we would then go out to bid for with another RFP?
Yes, it would be later upon design. Basically, the two schedules were provided to show that in the event we'd consider with a change order, that it would fall within to be constructed in '26. And in the event we didn't, it was stated in the memo and during the presentation that if we wanted to go in another direction, we'd have to go back out for an RFP for, pretty much going back to square, square one with regards to designing option 1B.
Right. And, and so, council, this question for Councilmember Kelly, are you suggesting that somebody else could come up with a cheaper, somebody else could do that design for a lower price?
Correct.
Or engineer, I mean, it's only 38, it's not even $39,000.
Right. So it's not only the design, but, so there's already modifications in this where Smith Group has already said they plan to modify what we recommended. So I am concerned based on the last proposal that this will be overdesigned and overcost. And I think we can, they also said they somehow billed us $25,000 more than they needed. I don't know how that happened, why they ended up, now they're returning $25,000 to us, but, so, yes. So that's what I'm saying, that the overall, my, my concern is that overall, both the cost to design it and the overall design, that we're going to come in at a much more cost-effective rate, both with what ends up getting designed as, as well as the price to-
My understanding is you're concerned not so much with the cost of coming up with the drawings, but the cost of implementing those drawings?
Both. But, but mostly the implementation, but both. And I think that we could get a couple of quotes right now. We've had several firms working with us, and we wouldn't have to go through the RFP process. So I, you know, and we did have one firm make a proposal that both the Parks and Rec Board, Preservation and Council preferred. And so I think at least we should get at least, I think we could get a couple. We've had the WT Group also work with the city. I think we could come back with two quotes without going through the whole, based on firms that know the, know the, the area.
I'm going to reclaim the floor and direct another question to Chris. The price estimates that we had in front of us on November 10th, were those presented by GEI, that those price ranges? Or were those our interpretations of their concept designs?
Sure. So all of the estimates that we provided on the slide were presented by, within GEI's final report, for each of their alternatives, they provided that estimate. So it was GEI's estimate of the constructability.
If GEI's estimate, if GEI did the design, this is how much they thought it would-
It would be to construct.
Yeah. Would be the appropriate price range. So if we did, you know, hit a pause button and kind of go back out to rethink this, what, you know, risk is there that we're pushing the construction period out, you know, further? And construction costs are going to continue to go up, and maybe we can pay a little bit less to come up with the drawings, and maybe the design could save a little money on construction. But if we're pushing this out a year, inflation is maybe going to eat up any savings that might be achievable here?
So it's of staff's interpretation of the timeline, being that in the, in the event we'd proceed with change order, we'd, it would be constructed by the end of next year. In the event we go the other way, using this, a similar schedule that was provided by Smith Group as far as where their timeline would fit, we just added a little bit of more because now we're starting with a brand-new consultant who may not have all of the topographic conditions of the lakefront, or there, there would need to be a lot more preliminary engineering and surveying done over there, which a lot of, has already been done by GEI. So we basically extended, reasonably extended the timeline of what it would look like, which would push us into 2027, which is why we came back for basically a recommendation in which direction staff, council would like us to move in, in which that's, I guess, what we're here for today. I, I wanted to touch on one part with regards to any sort of addition that was made by GEI, I'm sorry, Smith Group, with regards to option 1B. So they were provided a preliminary conceptual rendering of 1B, and it was of their interpretation. How can I construct a similar option based on what we would want to design for that? So things such as a found, concrete foundation under the sidewalk may not have been included, or surely wasn't noted in one of the options, but to have a resilient structure at the lakefront for high wave action and other activity, it would make sense that that would be input into the design. So that's why there may be some additional steps that were taken to make sure that the design is efficient and resilient.
Right. GEI 1B was just a concept sketch. It wasn't a detailed-
No.
Yeah, engineering design. So, all right. Thank you. That's all for now.
A lot of buttons up here. I think Alex had something to say next.
Yeah, thank you, members of City Council. So I just wanted to speak on the RFP and getting quotes. Based on the city's purchasing policies, we cannot go out for RFP in a couple situations, and they are single source and sole source. But if we're not going to follow the single source and sole source routes, then we have to go to RFP. And I want to specify that we have contracted with Smith Group because they were awarded the RFP. So it would be my recommendation that because we went through the RFP process previously, if this is voted down, the city would require the need to go through RFP again unless we're going to go a single source or sole source route, and we would have to have the, the documentation to pick those, those routes.
Councilmember Burns, followed by Kelly.
The preliminary surveying that you mentioned, is that, isn't that information that the city now owns? My understanding is Smith Group gathered that information, but did they not provide that to the city? Is that, do we not have access to that information that we could provide to GEI or whoever we end up working with?
Sure. So as part of their preliminary design, when we previously came back to bid with a recent rendering, a lot of that, they already did the surveying of the lakefront. So it's, it's very likely that upon request, we could perceivably receive that CAD file with all of the, but it's, it's no guarantee that they would provide it or that, that's, we were provided plans set to go out to bid for, not necessarily any other information. Of course, they did have to do their own due diligence and a survey at the lakefront to get that, but what's, what was given to us is the plans and specifications to go out to bid at that time.
Is that typical or unusual? I mean, I would think if you're going to spend money for something, that you would want to receive all of that documentation. So why wouldn't we want to have what they have?
So it's fairly typical, typical to get the CAD at the very end upon like a red line or an as-built plan, where they'd give you basically, this is what it looked like before, and this is what the lakefront looks like now. That's when we input, I'm talking for more street transportation-related projects, where if we're replacing the water main, a lot of the elevations, we'll get an as-built and a CAD or GIS data that we'd be able to input. But preliminarily, a lot of the times, we're relying just on the plan set, and the survey would go out and get the local benchmark or control points and design accordingly, not necessarily provided the, the CAD file in advance upon request.
Yeah, I guess what I'm, and I would need a little bit more time to kind of work through everything you just said, this is the first time we're talking about it. But I guess my point is, is that in the future, I think we need to make sure that whatever information, preliminary surveying, whatever it is that is being collected during these early stages, that that information is, is provided in full to the city, if we can make that happen. It only feels like we should have access to everything that our kind of paid contractors have access to. And in that situation, then we could easily provide that information to other contractors if we felt that was appropriate. I, I think the second thing I'm, I'm trying to understand is, is that I know that we, I'm trying to find the line. I, I know we, Smith Group was retained through, it, it says shoreline something. And maybe you can help me out. There was an RF, or shoreline stabilization solutions.
So it was in RFQ?
In RFQ. So not an RFP, because I think it was mentioned it was an RFP. So it was an RFQ. When I see shoreline stabilization solutions, I don't necessarily, I wouldn't necessarily assume that that means that they have to do the dog beach. It maybe made sense for the city to say, okay, well, if we retain them to do shoreline stabilization, it makes sense to do a change order and, and expand the scope to include the dog beach. But we didn't, when we did that RFQ, we didn't know that we were gonna need a, that we were going to do a dog beach ramp, did we, at that time?
Of course not, no.
I just wanted to get that on the record. You know, so, so again, we didn't hire them. Smith Group shouldn't have any, they shouldn't feel entitled to the, a contract to install a, a dog ramp, because that's not what they originally responded to. And therefore, it feels like, you know, it would be appropriate if we so choose to say, okay, well, if we're going to get this designed, I understand it's a small amount, but if we're going to get this designed, why not, you know, look at other engineering firms? I think what I'm most interested in is since they were the one that came up with the solution, why wouldn't we want them, why wouldn't we want to know how much they would charge for design? Because it, you know, the other thing I'm trying to understand is like, Smith Group didn't come up with this solution. They had an opportunity to, but they did not come up with this solution. Because we, I know this was a long, this was a part of, a long, big part of our discussion where we asked, like, all right, is there a more direct way, you know, where we can, a more direct and less costly way that we can get a ramp here? And then they came back with certain solutions before GEI got involved. And I don't think any of those alternatives were the same as what GEI has provided. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And so, it's not, it's not their solution. They didn't come up with it. They had an opportunity to come up with an alternative that would meet the needs, at least of the majority of council that supported going back out with GEI. So it just, it, it feels like it makes sense to, to give them a shot at, at, at designing for a solution that they came up with. So again, my last question is, Council Rugby, can you explain, like, what would you recommend, if we move forward with this, would you recommend sole source, single source, and why? If you had to choose between the two? I know you're saying RFQ, but if you had to choose between the two, which one and why?
I believe it would be a single source, but, you know, we would have to articulate exactly why it would qualify as a single source.
Okay. I mean, an RFQ is not an RFP. It should, that shouldn't take that long to do either, right? I don't understand, why is it, why do we feel like it'll delay this significantly?
So an RFQ was done at that time. Basically, we went to consultants who had coastal engineers on their, on their, let's say, their budget, that they can actually help us with the design of the shoreline stabilization project. That's why, that's when both GEI and, and Smith Group were both interviewed as one of the six panelists, to basically interview, because that's a request for qualifications, which one do we want to move forward in the future? That will rank them based on certain criteria. One of them was expertise in qualifications, and that was significantly heavy on coastal engineering experience. So at that time, we, I feel like we already did the qualification assessment of all-
You're right. I don't want to, I'm confused. My question is, through, we've never done an RFP for this process, and so I guess this is a question for Council Rugby, why you're saying that to just, to go out to all the firms that we pre-qualified, I think we pre-qualified a few engineers, or maybe they responded to an RFQ process, we couldn't just reach out to them and say, look, we want to move in this direction with this design. We need somebody designing. Can you provide us a quote or some information about cost? GEI could respond, Smith Group could respond, and any other engineering firm. How, how could we achieve that? It have to be single source or sole source still?
I think if you responded to the groups that responded to their RFQ, as long as you make the request to all of them-
Yeah.
-that would be fine. But I would have to go back with public works staff and see what that RFQ looked like. I, I'm just not familiar with it to know exactly.
But I'm saying, we could get a quote from that same group? We can get quotes, cost estimates for that, from that group? Or not cost estimates, but really?
Potentially. Again, I would have to go back and just read through the RFQ. If it qualifies, then yes, we could ask all the groups.
Yeah, okay. I guess the last thing I'm trying to say is that it just, it doesn't feel like there's anything that happened, and I'll close with this. It doesn't seem like we did anything previously that would require us to, you know, to, to work with Smith Group or really anyone on such a specific project. And, as again, because I had already established that what we did earlier, shoreline stabilization, without any knowledge that we were going to need a dog ramp. And so I, I guess what I would support is just going back out to that same group, saying, look, we got this project, you know, if we can get ahold of the shoreline surveying and other information, here's all the information we need. We're just trying to understand what, what you would charge to design it. GEI could also respond, and then we could make a decision from there. That's all, sir. Thank you.
Councilmember Kelly.
So, so I agree. That's why I think, you know, we need to vote this down. And, you know, G, in terms of having, getting all the information that we need in terms of the geotechnical issues around the Lake, Lake Michigan, I mean, GEI is definitely the firm that's most known for, you know, its geotechnical expertise, coastal engineering. I know that would not be an issue. But, yeah, so I, I would be fine with that, with, you know, asking the firms that responded to shoreline stabilization, because that would be a different, you know, if any of them would be interested in providing a quote for this ramp, for this relatively non-complex ramp, that would be fine. So.
So the, Councilmember Isles.
Okay. I voted to look at this again, because I'm looking for the cheapest and easiest way to build a dog ramp. That is ADA compliant. Smith Group has come in high when they've delivered to previous councils their version of the dog ramp. So I'm a little bit, I'm stuck with sort of a 50/50 decision. I'd like to see more quotes than just the Smith Group. They have, from what I've seen, come in high, usually. But I don't think just singling out G.E.I. is appropriate. I think we're going to have to do an RFP if we want to get more quotes. And that is likely to delay the process. And to Councilmember Newsma's point, that may eliminate any savings that we have if we push it out farther, costs keep going up. So I really am stuck in sort of a conundrum here. But I do always think that having more options is, is better than just having a single source, especially when that single source has a reputation of coming in high.
Councilmember Newsma, followed by Rogers.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. What if, rather than bifurcated design phase and then construction phase, what if we did an RFP for a design-build contract? You know, and went to market with that? You know, we've got our conceptual design, we have whatever supporting data we can get from our, you know, previous contractual relationship with Smith Group. Hopefully, that's enough for, yeah, Smith Group, G.E.I., and two or three others to give us their best proposal, you know, for an all-in cost to execute the design and construction of what we have agreed conceptually the thing should look like.
Surely, I would think that if we'd go back out for an RFP, the timeline would stay similar, especially on the design end, where whoever would, we'd have to start that whole two-month procurement process. And in the event neither G.E.I. or Smith Group get it, that person would be, have to start really from scratch with regards to their knowledge of the lakefront. I don't recommend either way. I'm just, I just want to make sure that it may extend the timeline of the project into '27. Again, that remains to be seen.
But if we, like, what I, would it make sense to do a design-build contract? Give us, you know, rather than design, and then we'll get a design, and then we go back out again for another, another quote for construction? What if we had one, what if we did it all in one, a design-build? We don't have a lot of experience with design-build at the City of Athens. And we did the, the skate ramp with a design-build, I believe. We didn't? We talked about it.
I think it's a fairly different scope of services. Maybe not many geotechnical engineering firms who do design have the ability to construct it in the later phase. It's something we could look into.
So, I'm suggesting something which you're steering me away from, because of the nature of the particular.
But they do, I'm sorry. But I have to interrupt. They do, though. Like, G.I. does design-build, W.T. Group, that's worked with the city. They do design.
Hold on. Councilmember Kelly, you, Councilmember Newsma has the floor.
I've asked the question. You've answered it. If Councilmember Kelly has more questions, I'll turn the floor over to her.
Well, you can't do that. You can ask her a question, using your time.
Okay.
Or she's also in the queue. Are you?
I'm good then. If she's in the queue, she'll have it.
Okay. While we are talking about all this, I want to acknowledge that I called on you, I screwed up in calling on you. Councilmember Newsma was speaking for a second time, and I did not notice the number that he'd already spoken. So my, my bad. We move on with Councilmember Rogers.
Thank you. So this seems like we went out with an RFQ for one thing, and it's kind of evolved into something else. My question to council, S. Council, is, this has all been done through change orders. Is there a way, and I don't think there is, but I'm asking the question anyway, to make a change order with a different vendor on the same contract? That's what I thought, that there was no way to do that.
Just for the record, the answer was no.
The answer was no. There was a shaking of the head, which I anticipated that answer being the answer. I mean, this is, this is one of those weird situations where we, we kind of have let this thing get beyond what its original scope was, and now we're stuck. Either approving something that is with a vendor that we don't feel comfortable necessarily working with, or with a different vendor who we feel more comfortable working with but don't have a contract with. For, for my, from my point of view, I would rather work with a, with a vendor that we feel comfortable with, and that we feel is going to be doing the work that we want them to do in the manner in which we want it done. And not just an add-on that we've somehow, unfortunately, this is something some of us are, Councilmember Isles, Councilmember Davis and I are kind of inheriting, and this would have been questions I would have asked probably a long time ago. But this is where we are. And I feel like we should be working to get the best deal that we can with somebody that we feel comfortable working with. And so that's, that's where my recommendation would be on this.
Okay. At this time, no one's asking to speak for a first time. We'll give our first second opportunities to Councilmember Kelly with 4:20 left.
Thank you. I just wanted to dovetail on Councilmember Newsma. I do very much like the idea of a design-build. I would much rather see us go in that direction altogether, so I support that. I think either way, we need to, like, vote down this, and then we can, then the next discussion would be whether we bring back quotes for, I mean, we could just ask for quotes for design-build. There's at least two other firms that have already worked with our city on this G.I. and W.T. Group. What if, and both of those groups do do design-build? So, but I mean, that would be after we, after we vote. So I do like the idea of a design-build. But, but either way, I think we need to get through this next vote on voting down the current contract.
Clerk, Councilmember Hiddocattis.
Yeah, just one quick comment. We'll go back to, I really think when we had the initial design, you know, we kind of over-engineered something that I think was what everyone wanted at the time. I really think we should have went forward with that design. We would have probably been at just a little bit more expensive than what a very pared-down solution is. At this point, I'm going to be voting yes for this, just because when we have public facilities that really need to be ADA accessible, and we cannot afford to have this carry on for another, like, two years. And so, while, you know, we're not getting something that we're all super happy with, I think we just need to take action. And so, that's why I'll be voting yes.
At this time, no one's requesting to speak for a first or second time, so we go back to Councilmember Kelly with 3:35 left.
So I do want to address the ADA, and that is one of the main reasons I want us to vote this down. When that design came back, it was met with a lot of challenge and opposition from many in the mobility-challenged community. It was the length of a football field. And, you know, I know talking with Access Living, the attorney, there was mention that we could even be sued for, I mean, for creating a path that long. And when I talk with Smith Group, none of the, they were not, I asked them, I said, were you trying to follow any of the basic tenets of ADA? Meaning, you find parking as close as possible, number one, you make the pathway as direct and short as possible, and you make it inclusive if possible. And they said, no. So I am concerned also about hiring a firm that will adhere very closely to delivering a product that is direct, inclusive with parking right at the, so I think we're also meeting that by, by going back out. I think we'll get a better product for our mobility-challenged community. Thank you. And I'm concerned that going back to this again is a little bit like, would be like going back to Copenhagen to do another fountain for us. So I hope we can move, move on. Thank you.
At this time, no one's requesting to speak for a first time, so we go back to Councilmember Burns, whose time has expired, but, yeah. Will you, though? Go ahead.
Just quick, again, I just want to reiterate, because there's a lot that's set up, set up here and things get lost. Smith Group, again, and correct me if I'm wrong, they had an opportunity to come up with an alternative concept or plan that would achieve the things that Councilmember Kelly just said. So it wasn't just, although she mentioned that, that, you know, they, they responded, at least to her, I think is what she's saying, that, that, no, we weren't, we don't, weren't necessarily given that direction. They were given that direction at some point, and still did not come back with alternatives that, didn't come up with an alternative that kind of matches what G.E.I. came up with. And so that's why I'm saying, since they came up with the, the idea, it makes sense to allow them at least a shot at designing their idea, their concept. So that's, I just wanted to make sure that that's clear, understood by the public. Thank you.
Would the clerk please take the roll?
And, and before we vote, can you make it clear what we're voting on? Because I, this could get confusing.
This is a repeat of the vote that occurred unanimously last time, a vote to approve change order number five.
Councilmember Davis?
No.
Councilmember Rogers?
No.
Councilmember Hiddocattis?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
No.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Isles?
No.
Councilmember Newsma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
No.
Councilmember Saffron?
With three voting in favor and six voting against, the motion fails and the change order is not approved. Now, on item 824.
Sorry, can I make a motion to direct staff to bring back quotes for design-build from G.I. and W.T., W.T. Group? Both of those are firms that do lakefront construction.
So this is, this is not a design-build question, this is a legal question. Alex.
I, I think you could direct staff to look and see if we can request quotes from all of the firms that submitted responses to the RFQ. I, I would hesitate to recommend you specifying any companies.
Okay, so, do we have to vote on that, or?
Alex, does that require a vote?
I mean, I think staff has gotten. Sorry, my mic was off. I think staff's gotten direction. I defer to Luke, but I think we know staff's going forward, and council already directed us to work on the design for 1B.
Yeah, I would, I would agree with Corporation Council, I think we have direction.
To get quotes, to get quotes from the various, various firms, including G.I.
To see quotes from all the firms that responded to the original RFQ.
And could we ask them for both a quote for design and a quote for design-build? I think it would be really good for us to see that. So to ask for both that, okay. Does that sound, does everyone feel, we don't need to vote on that? That we're?
Chris, are you good with that?
Okay.
I mean, there's truly no harm in asking for a quote, yeah?
Should we just do a vote to, okay, so I'd like to direct staff, take a vote, to request, get multiple quotes, including G.I.'s for design, and also for design-build.
From all the firms that were qualified as part of the RFQ process.
Yeah, I would also, since we also work with W.T. Group, I don't know if they responded or not, but they have already worked with the city, so I would like to add the W.T. Group.
I just, I mean, I want to be really clear, like, we should, we should not be up here picking vendors and naming particular companies and saying, we want that one, but not that one. I want to make sure that whatever we do here is consistent with state law and our policies.
Okay.
So just want to, I want to make, just, I'm not the expert here, Alex is, so, just want clarity for all of us.
Yeah, I agree with your recommendation, Mayor.
Okay. So then direct staff to secure quotes, both design and design-build.
And you have that, you need, you?
I'm moving that. I'm, so that, to your point that it wouldn't be bad to, okay.
Councilmember Kelly moves to direct staff to get quotes from all of the firms qualified as part of the RFQ process on this matter, to give quotes, to give the opportunity to give quotes, and to give up to two different quotes, one for the design, and one for design-build for this project. Councilmember Newsma, seconds. Councilmember Burns.
So if the company does design-build, they would do one just design and one design-build? That's what they would submit to the city? And if they just do design, they would only submit design? Is that?
So they, right, so that we could evaluate it. Because I do think, to Councilmember Newsma's point, design-build is probably the, that's the movement right now, and I do think it's a better direction to go.
Yeah.
So I think having both those options, and if we only get design, then we're just looking at the designs. But if we get a couple of nice design-builds?
So, Councilmember Burns has the floor.
Sorry.
No, I just, but I think that needed clarity. So that was one. Two, since we're moving to build, we typically do RFP for build. And so that's where this starts to get, I'm trying to understand, you know, because a, a quote is one thing for design, we've already done some design, there's some information that the city has that we could provide, once you get into build, that's something else? Should we do an RFP instead? What are we, is it appropriate to get design and build quotes? That just doesn't, that doesn't feel, what'd you say? I, I don't, that's why I need staff to help me.
Chris, can you come speak to this?
Because when I hear quotes, I hear, that's usually what we do with something that's like, smaller projects, twenty, less than 25,000. For major construction projects, I've always known us to go through an RFP process to do that. So, yes, please.
I would, I would assume it's standard practice that the, for lower dollar amounts, sub-hundred thousand, for example, you can go out for a design-build quote, for example, for things like that. But when it starts going to upwards of five, 600,000, pre-design, a lot of it may be hard. They were given basically a conceptual 1B to follow, and they, they don't really have any sort of preliminary design done. So I, I don't, I don't, I don't know if that's an approach that you guys would like to take. But in the event that you do, going that RFP process would definitely push it to the prior year, whereas going for quotes, it may not be as accurate, or they may not have a good idea of where they are so soon to get that quote out. I don't know.
I, I just want to make sure we understand exactly what we're going to be getting from this quote. I just heard, you kind of corrected yourself, but for a moment, you said, it may not be accurate. Like, I think that's the difference with the RFP, is they're telling us, this is what it's going to cost, right? This is a good, solid number that we have come up with based on an adequate amount of information that we've received from the city, like, it's a higher standard. And so I just want to make sure that if we're going to include build, that we're doing it in the most appropriate way.
Councilmember Kelly.
So I, your point's well taken, because you'd be issuing an RFP anyway, so it wouldn't be any different if, rather than, to your point, bringing back quotes, we just issue an RFP for design-build? And we just skip this, because you're going to be, and we'll move just as quickly as we would have in the others, actually, more quickly in this scenario. So maybe that is the way to go, just to do, issue an RFP for design-build.
So, you can withdraw your motion and make a different one. Councilmember Rogers has a point to make. I would just, I think we're sort of performing a play about why doing this stuff live, if you're councilmembers and not procurement experts and engineers, is a bad idea. But go ahead, did you want to, did you want to change your motion?
Well, I just want to hear, I think Councilmember Rogers.
Councilmember Rogers.
Yeah, I just want to say, you know, I think it's a little weird to be asking for design when we have a design we all like. So it, it, it just seems a little weird. If we're all basing it off of 1B, and we're going to say, go do something similar to 1B and give us your cost on building it, that seems a little strange to me, to ask for a design and build both. As a designer, I would be very upset if I designed something, and then you decided that, oh, I have to bid against everybody else for executing it as well after the fact. So just throwing that out there, I think it, it kind of muddies the water a bit.
Alex.
I just wanted to specify, based on the responsible bidders ordinance, I just want to make sure that if we don't go through the RFP process, that all the contractors are made aware of the RBO and their requirements to follow it. Because I think that will be important information if they even qualify to submit a bid.
Councilmember Kelly.
Councilmember Rogers, are you then suggesting that you would prefer that we just issue an RFP for design-build? Is that what I'm understanding? No. Can you clarify?
If indeed people are going to give us other designs, but then I think we step our. ourselves way back in trying to decide what design do we want. We've gone through this process for however long to come up with a design that everybody kind of agrees upon, and what's going to happen if you say design and build is, is everybody just going to lean to 1B? Or are people going to create new designs, which then just takes us back further?
Right, so just to clarify, that's a plan, 1B is a plan, and the design is, you know, what Smith Group is saying, they'll charge us whatever it is for to do the technical design for. So, so I think that we should, based on 1B, ask for a design-build based on that concept.
As long as we're doing that and not introducing anything else new to this whole mix, because we don't need another variable in all of this.
Agree.
Do you want to change your motion a little bit?
Yeah, if that's, yes, okay, so I'll change my motion a little bit. So I would like to move that we issue an RFP, yeah, an RFP for design-build based on 1B, the GEI Plan 1B. Is that?
I'll second.
Councilmember Kelly withdraws her previous motion and moves that, moves to direct staff to issue an RFP for a design-build contract relative to Plan 1B. Councilmember Newsma seconds. Councilmember Burns.
I'm good.
Would the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Davis?
This is for directing, right?
Yes, directing staff to issue that RFP?
Aye.
Or prepare that RFP or something.
Councilmember Rogers?
Aye.
Councilmember Hidakakis?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Isles?
Aye.
Councilmember Newsma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Sufferton?
With nine voting in favor, none voting against, Columbia has been achieved, the motion carries and staff's been directed to issue that RFP. And now on item 824, Councilmember Kelly.
I'd, item 824, Resolution 68R-25 authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with Family Focus for its move from 2010 Dewey to 160107 Simpson Street and a disposition plan for 2010 Dewey.
Councilmember Kelly moves adoption of Resolution 68-r-25. Councilmember Newsma seconds. Councilmember Rogers.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The only concerns I really have about this are, there's a couple things, really. One is, I want to make sure that we do whatever we can to make sure the city does not end up with this building. We do not want this building, we do not need this building. I don't know what we need to do or say up here to make sure that we never go down that route, but I want to go on the record as saying, I do not want us to go down that route. Because as we all know, we're probably going to have maybe one, two, three extra District 65 buildings that we're going to be stuck with at some point, and do we start investing ourselves in those properties and trying to do something there? This is an old-school building, it's had a different use since then, but do we end up acquiring properties? I don't want us to do that. The other thing is, you know, kind of what, what, what stopgaps can we put in so that we don't end up going down a money pit route with this as well? So that we don't end up like, hey, here's 1.3, I, we need another 600,000, or this sort of stuff. And we've seen this happen where change orders, and this isn't a change order, but change orders constantly come through, and all of a sudden, something that costs us one amount ends up costing us twice that amount. So those are the, those are the concerns I have with this, and if we have mechanisms in place to prevent those things from happening, I'm perfectly fine here, but I want to make sure that we have those mechanisms in place.
Good evening, Mayor, City Councilmembers, Clerk Mendoza, City Manager Stowe, Sarah Flax, Community Development Director. We've been pretty careful about what we put in our scope of work. What I think the value we can bring, which is important to the community, is to get people to understand, because of Family Focus, the Family Focus Building's landmark status, what can and can't be done with it, and what the zoning allows, all those different things, which is really hard for organizations to navigate if they're not familiar with that. And by getting, you know, the historic preservation organizations in the state of Illinois involved, as we did with the Harley-Clark, that brought a lot more attention and a lot more other organizations to even look at it than would normally just be looking at a redevelopment prospect in Evanston that they don't know anything about. That's really.
Don't mention Harley-Clark if you're trying to assuage my fears of us ending up with a building for a long period of time.
But that's only with the last version, which actually was successful.
Yes, but it took us many years to get there.
Well, we're getting there right away. And I think that we heard people talking about the importance of this structure and, or the history of foster school and Family Focus, and all of this, anything, of course, that anybody's going to come back with and recommend, will have to go for people who are concerned about historic preservation. It would have to be approved by our preservation group, they would have to get a certificate of appropriateness for anyone who was going to take on anything. And this is to help Family Focus be able to get interest. We do not want to do an RFP for them or anything like that, that will be theirs. If we could perhaps provide some advice, but our responsibility was to pretty much end with that, getting requests for expression of interest.
All right, thank you. Yeah, I just want to make sure that we don't end up getting sucked in further than what we are anticipating at this point, and that, as you know, preservation can be revoked, all sorts of things can happen. So I just kind of want us to be aware that we are moving in a certain path, and that successor council may not move in that same path as us. But we kind of need to make our intentions clear upfront as we do that. Hopefully, they will be able to do something with the building before a new council were to come in.
The advantage is if they get expressions of interest, they can work directly with them, they don't, they're not required to do RFPs, anything of that choice. Then it's up to them what they want to proceed with.
Councilor Newsma.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So the additional amount of city funding we'd be spending in this would be minimal. I believe it'd just be staff time, helping them, you know, develop and do the RFQ.
No, we would, we would do the RFQ and handle getting responses and present them.
Right. We're not writing a check to anybody to do that, we're doing that work in-house.
Correct. But this proposal does have paying the, keeping the building operating.
Okay, we're paying the, to keep the building operational.
With the money that was originally from ARPA. Yeah.
But also, the agreement includes the city being reimbursed for those expenses when the, if the building is eventually sold.
Yes, subject to, yeah. We would give.
In no case do we anticipate those expenses, even if for some reason they don't get reimbursed to us. The number we will have spent is less than the $3 million we had previously indicated.
Substantially less, yes.
Allegated in ARPA funding.
Yeah. Yeah. Even if we expended everything that we've said in here, there would be almost a million four left over, and then the amount of staff that this would take, if that's added in, would certainly not take away a great deal of that. Okay.
All right, thank you.
Would the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Davis? No. What's the question?
Oh.
What are we voting on?
The vote, the motion is to approve Resolution 68-r-25. Item 824.
Councilmember Rogers?
No.
Councilmember Hidakakis?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
I'm sorry, I'm still a little bit unclear about the whole, I was trying to ask a question before it got started. So.
We're in the middle of a roll call.
Okay. No.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Councilmember Isles?
Aye.
Councilmember Newsma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Sufferton?
With seven voting in favor and two voting against, the motion carries and Resolution 68-r-25 is adopted. Councilmember Kelly? Or is that your question from before? Got it. Okay. We now move to call of the wards. Councilmember Davis.
I don't have anything, thank you.
Councilmember Rogers.
I'll begin with happy holidays, which I'm sure we'll all say. Also, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to request that we start following Rule 19.1, which would include reading of the consent agenda. I think it gets very confusing when people are pulling things off by numbers only, not only for some of us who are flipping through multiple pages, but from people following along at home or here in the audience. It's something that was, has been done previously, and I think it just helps guide everyone. I can read 19.1 if you'd like to, since I see you pulling it up. Basically, it just says, "Consent agenda items are marked with an asterisk on the regular consent agenda items so marked shall be presented to the city council by a reading of the title of the action." And I think it would just help us all keep track better of where we are and what's on the consent agenda, and then allow people to pull things off as it is being read. Thank you.
This Saturday at the Prieto Center, there's an open house for the Prieto Early Learning Center. So from 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM, there'll be an open house, get to learn about the childcare that's starting on January 5th. So there are spots open, so hope to see people there.
Councilmember Kelly.
Thank you. First Ward Holiday Gathering at the Evanston Made Pop-Up Location on Maple from 6:30 to 8:00 this Thursday. Thank you.
Councilmember Harris?
Nothing.
Councilmember Isles?
My next office hours are on Wednesday, the 17th, at Hoosier Mama's from 6:00 to 8:00. If you come, I will wish you happy holidays in person.
Councilmember Newsma.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a few things. I want to share a statistic that I shared at my ward meeting last week, looking at business openings and closings in calendar year '25. Actually have data through the end of September, which show that for non-home businesses, there were 32 businesses that opened in Evanston, and there were eight businesses that closed. And yet, some of those show up on both sides of the equation, because they were businesses that relocated. So just doing some corporate, or some municipal civic boosterism by pointing out that the number of business openings are far exceeding the number of business closings, at least through the end of September this year. Moving on, office hours in December will be Saturday, the 13th, from 10:00 AM to noon at the Evanston Made Holiday Market at 1710 Maple. I will wish everybody Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, happy holidays, both right now and again on Saturday. Thank you.
Councilmember Burns.
No report.
Councilmember Sufferton.
Just quickly want to acknowledge the passing of John Nelson, who was alderman of the 6th Ward from 1977 to 1993, and wish his family peace and thank him for his service.
Councilmember Newsma is going to try to make a motion again.
Pursuant to 5 Ilonai compiled statutes, 120/2C, I move that the city council convene into executive session to discuss agenda items regarding real estate and minutes review. These agenda items are permitted subjects to be considered in executive session and are enumerated exceptions under the Open Meetings Act, those exceptions being 5 ILCS 120/2C, Section 5, and Section 21.
Councilmember Newsma moves the city council resolve itself in an executive session for the reasons just enumerated. Councilmember Harris seconds. Would the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Rogers?
Aye.
Councilmember Hidakakis?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Councilmember Isles?
Aye.
Councilmember Newsma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Sufferton?
Aye.
With nine voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries and 8:37 PM, the city council resolves itself in an executive session to begin immediately in the council library.